Okay. Welcome back, everyone. This is our Creek County Board of Commissioners Workshop, January 6, 2021. We have some pretty pretty interesting and active projects that we're going to discuss. I think that Item 3A, revising a job description and developing related programs. Item 3C, workshop discussion on NeoGov and OpenGov. Item 3D, Commissioner lays on assignments. And E, workshop discussion, are somewhat related. And we need some good input from people. I'm looking forward to that. I think this can be a very productive day. I would warn you, we might be here more than two hours. If we stay till 5:00, I'm sure surely up for that. But I just want to keep it productive. We have several people who would like to offer public comments. Director Rickert, I have one question. What is the timeframe? And if you could just make a rough estimate on the noise ordinance discussion? Have you had? You think that would take 20 minutes, maybe longer? What's your thoughts there? Putting you on the spot here, not intended.
Yeah, I put down 30 minutes. I was unsure how much discussion there would be on it. And but.
How would you feel about tabling that for?
Ladies driven up.
That's right.
I'm sorry. No, disregard. We will not table since you drove this far. No, we would not ask you to come back from Brookings. So that is the second item on the project list. So maybe we'll move that if the board. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I think you're maybe going to say.
Maybe move that to the front of the list? Good, okay. Yeah, we'll move that to the, if the board's okay with that? So. You know, I skipped item number two. Amendment, agenda amendments. But it sounds like we're okay?
Yes.
Okay. So would you like to come up now? Or did you have a speaker slip?
I don't have any slips. If I've never been to one of these before, I don't know what to expect.
You were here two months ago, weren't you?
Yes, I was.
Thank you. Well, you're welcome to come up. I'm going to ask everybody that comes up to the podium. Okay? And I'm going to pause you if you don't mind just for a moment. You kind of need to adjust both microphones so we can get good volume. I want to acknowledge, we have the Roadmaster in the audience. We have the Sheriff, Sheriff John Ward, the Roadmaster in the audience. Richard Christensen. We have the Assessor, Jim Cullen, former Commissioner George Rhodes. And I thought I saw, yeah, Coordinator Madison. I thought I saw also the Clerk Cullen is here. So I want the public to know that they are invested in this, all those people I just mentioned. And they deserve to be acknowledged. State your name for the record and why you're here.
My name is Rebecca Halfley. I live at 15935 Ocean View Drive. The property I'm talking about is 15943 Ocean View Drive. And I don't know if I'm supposed to read something. I wrote something to let everybody kind of know what's happening. I do have a letter that the next, the neighbor on the other side, New Year's Day was ungodly.
So do you have something you would like to read? And is it approximately three minutes? Is that what you're thinking?
I'll give it a shot.
Okay.
My name is Becky. I'm at the workshop, share my issue with you and my misery. I am addressing noise issue deputy enforced for intentional disrespectful controllable music in general, subwoofer, controllable noise disturbance of the peace violation from the peace from close vicinity willfully making noise so loud which impacts my life and others around me. It's already on the books through the state, maybe not in a county, but under disturbance of the peace. It can be enforced by a sheriff. I know they don't like to do this, such a vast array of noise problems. This is maybe should be individualized. But it's deliberate and they know it. They've been told numerous text messages to the owner. But it still goes on. And he rents this place to these folks. They think they can do this because there's no noise ordinance in Creek County, which I get. But there is a disturbance of the peace through state code. And also on Mr. Fortman's website, he does mention noise nuisance. So it is there somewhere. It's not just at 10 o'clock and over because they don't shut it down. It's before 10 o'clock all day long. I can't even go outside and mow my lawn or make regular noises without listening to this boom, 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 subwoofer, the kind you hear in the car next to you at the stoplight that vibrates your windows, vibrates your body. I have a letter, I'll give it to Mr. Pash. She wrote it directly to him and you commissioners from New Year's Day. Her, her, she also was having noise issues. She didn't really want to be involved, but I called her and said, hey, man, this has got to be stopped. These people can't keep doing this and disrupting our lives like we're nothing. Where's our rights to have to listen to this crap? At 3:00 in the morning on New Year's Day, before even the party started later, they were revving up cars, sheriff came out there. They, some girl was screaming next door, sheriff showed up. They told him, I don't know what they told him. We're sitting on our couch at 3:00 in the morning, wide awake. Sheriff's left, music didn't get shut down. The girl kind of shut up. Right after that, this fellow got into his Cougar, the black Cougar with the white lines, and zipped out of their parking lot, took her dad for a ride around the block as fast as they could go. Knowing the sheriff said left, and they did it anyway. This is what I got to deal with. And F this and F that, F this loud as they can at 3:00 in the morning. There's something has to be done about noise. It's wrong. It's driving me nuts. I can't even sell my house because of this issue. Who's going to buy it? You know, there's two years they can come back on me for non-disclosure of issues. I don't want to be sued. But I can't even sell my place. And this is an issue. I can't even get out of it. I don't have any money. I don't have nowhere else to go. This was my dream home to go to Brookings. I'm just asking for some help from you folks on this. If they could just turn to turn it down. That's all I ask. You know, I don't care about music. It's that damn subwoofer that vibrates your bean and the floor in my house. And the idea that they're doing it deliberately and willfully getting away from way with it because they know that nobody can enforce this. This fellow over here, he can enforce this. There's no, nothing on the books.
Did you, did you state your name for the record, ma'am?
I did.
Okay.
Want it again?
Do we get that okay? Wouldn't hurt.
Rebecca Halfley. H A double F as in Frank, L E Y. And I'm pissed off.
Address again, ma'am?
1594, 15935 Ocean View Drive. Sheriff did get a call. They got a call twice that night. And for the neighbor also, her name is Barbara Bronstein Ryan Copeland on the other side.
Thank you very much for making the trip up here.
Okay.
I'm going to go to Director Rickert and then right back to you. So you have, you included in this, the.
I have, in case you guys.
We have an Oregon administrative rule here. We'd be glad to send that to you. Do we have your email by chance?
You've got everything. Everybody knows my name because everybody's gotten 25 letters.
Okay. That wasn't a very wise question. I'm sorry. But I want to make sure that you have this Oregon administrative rules. And I want to ask Director Rickert if he wants to refer to that or is this is, this is a lot of information. It looks like good work.
I have emails. I have all the emails I sent to Mr. Fortman about everything. I've tried to do remedy myself. This has been going on since probably April. I let it slide, let it slide, so do the neighbor. It's, it's got to be too much in November that I said, well, there's got to be somewhere else I can go. And that's why you fellas are here and it all.
Well, we, it looks like we've got some work to do. You're very much appreciated.
Okay, or somebody will let me know what goes on or am I just?
We'll take that responsibility.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Rickert?
Well, I have to say, I'm a little embarrassed. I don't remember writing all of this on here.
That's okay. It's quite extensive and none of us are going to read the full thing. But it's Oregon administrative rule, which would be very helpful. It's Chapter 3400, Division 35, Department of Environmental Quality. Commissioner Pash?
Well, I just was wondering if it's possible. I mean, I know a lot of, a lot of cities and communities have ordinances for loud noise. We can't.
Everybody turn your cell phones on. Joke.
Clint Eastwood just walked in.
Oh, yeah. You feeling lucky today?
So anyway, I just, I just know that there's, you know, we can do these things. I would like to perhaps get our code enforcement and the sheriff's office together to maybe come up with a draft of something that they feel comfortable to do. And then bring, you know, maybe give that to Director Rickert to bring back to the board. But I think law enforcement and code enforcement needs to be the ones to deal with what they feel comfortable to do, how far they, how far and how fast that it should be dealt with. You know, if it's a warning, if it's a fine, however to do that. But I, again, I think ours is to enact the policies. But this is something that is an enforceable thing. So I think that should be done through the sheriff and code enforcement's office.
Commissioner Herzog?
Can we hear from Sheriff Ward on his thoughts on this?
Come on up, Sheriff.
Good afternoon, Sheriff Ward, Creek County Sheriff's Office. I personally haven't taken any complaints from this lady. But I, I do know that she's frustrated and I feel her pain. But we also have to deal with other people's rights as well. As far as what's reasonable, that's a judgment call. So what I will do is I will, when I get back to my office, I'll contact my patrol sergeants and have them do a lot more patrol in that area. And if they see something like that, they can make contact with the people and not demand, but ask that they comply with others' request. It's about all I can do at this point. I think it's more of an ordinance violation if at all. And that's where code enforcement steps in and takes care of that. We can cite for disorderly conduct if the statute, if it rises to that level. But we can't make any arrests or anything on it like that. And we can't force somebody to do something other, other than with a citation if we have, everything meets up in line with what we need to do to fix the problem.
I meant more the language of the ordinance than enforcement of it, so.
Well, Sheriff, let me ask you this. You said unreasonable. Go ahead, I'll come back to you, thank you.
If you guys have a starting point on it, Commissioner Pash, you know, we can overlook it and say, well, you may want to look at ORS, this statute, whatever, things like that. And we can't make up something that's up to decide, your guys' decision and to approve it if it's an ordinance violation. County ordinance.
Sheriff, you said within reason or reasonable, it's a reasonable noise issue.
Yeah, 3:00 in the morning with subwoofer going on and waking you up, that's not reasonable.
So. So if subject or to us not having a policy or noise ordinance, would, if we were able to do that and it wasn't too complicated, would that help you and your, your staff in enforcement?
Well, it would be handed over to the code enforcement. That's what they would be doing is enforcing code, code violations. It's not a criminal offense.
Got you. So Commissioner Pash?
I would like to volunteer to pull up some other ordinances that are currently written in other areas. Just do a kind of a Google search on it and bring some of that language back to possibly another workshop with code enforcement. Come up with a rough draft that we can show the sheriff's department and code enforcement and come up with agreeable language to, to an ordinance on that.
I think that's a, go ahead.
Thank you.
And in the meantime, like I said, I will have my patrol sergeants direct patrol when they are available and have extra time. Because right now, we're running from calls to calls to calls and, and following up on some major events and things. But when they have time to, to patrol that area and of course, if they get a complaint, if we get a noise complaint, I don't, you know, they'll go by and take a look at it, but it's a priority issue.
Thank you. I want to read something real quick or just take a second. But as part of the Oregon administrative rules that if you want to take that lead, Commissioner Pash, this might be a good place to start.
Is that the full agreement of the board?
Yeah, for you to do that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's get that to the end of the meeting. But in the interest of public health and welfare and in accordance with ORS 467.010, it is declared to be the public policy of the state of Oregon, number one, to provide a coordinated statewide program of noise control to protect the health, safety and welfare of Oregon citizens from the hazards and deterioration of the quality of life imposed by excessive noise emissions. Number two, to facilitate cooperation among units of state and local governments and establish and supporting those control, noise control programs consistent with the state program and to encourage the enforcement of viable local noise control regulations by the appropriate, appropriate local jurisdiction. Last, three, to develop a program for the control of excessive noise sources, which shall be undertaken in a progressive manner. And each of its objectives shall be accomplished by cooperation among all parties concerned. When you said the code enforcement, you know, they don't have quite the horsepower that a deputy has. And so I'm not saying.
They can still cite for county ordinance violations.
I understand, but you know, I, if this is a big enough issue and of course, I'm a motorcycle guy too. But sometimes, so often down Main Street, all three of our cities, sometimes the noise is unbelievable. And you don't want to spoil anybody's fun, but it is very noticeable. And I think it affects our visitor promotion efforts and tourism aspects. So I would just.
Very few, very few noise complaints, very few.
But you, do you know what I'm talking about? Do you hear the noise a lot of times? So you think that's.
I live by a highway. I hear motorcycles going by all the time. But you know, I would learn to live with it because I chose to live there.
So you don't think that's an issue?
I mean, life has got to go on.
Okay.
And other people have those rights as well. And I don't want to violate anybody's rights.
But is that any different at night if it, if it's going down Main Street at midnight? And I mean, I hear sometimes from Third Street, it's amazing.
Well, I could get somebody to stop the chip trucks and everything going by my house at 2:00 in the morning. You know, but I don't. I, I live with the noise because it's there. It's a fact of life.
Okay. Decibels between a chip truck and some of the motorcycles, I'm hearing nothing.
I hear motorcycles go by my, my place all the time. I live right on the highway. And they're pretty loud, yeah, but what can you do? They.
What I'm saying, if you had, if you have a conforming county noise ordinance, would you not want to consider some point including that? I mean, the ones that go over, it's just like a raceboat thing. If you went over 100 decibels, you were out. Stay off the water. You know, that's all I'm saying, so.
Well, those are permitted access too, so.
Yes. Commissioner Pash?
I would say if somebody's out there doing donuts in the middle of the street in town with a motorcycle, you may.
That's disorderly conduct.
Be more inclined to go cite that person as opposed to just someone driving through. That's more your point.
Absolutely.
Do you have an ordinance against that?
Well, it's disorderly conduct. It's a state.
Okay.
Or they could be reckless driving or any type of a traffic violation we can, if they're doing that. But if it's on public, private property, there's not much we can do about it. If they're out there doing donuts and stuff, unless it's disturbing the peace and we could consider it disorderly conduct.
Aren't you pretty good at donuts as a kid?
No, I like donuts, but. Yeah, I got to actually just add two, so anyway.
Commissioner Herzog?
So would the state police be able to help her?
No.
No?
No, they, they are a traffic control team, basically. And they can handle criminal calls, but if we ask them to, but if, if it's something that we can handle, we're not going to shove it off on them. I mean.
Well, as Commissioner, you know, he was mentioning Oregon State. And so I just, that was just a thought.
Yeah, they, they patrol the highway.
Yeah. And she's just off the 101, so. Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
You have to come. Time out. Time out, it's okay. It's okay. I'm going to go to Commissioner Pash and then I'm going to see if the sheriff has anything additional. Then, then we'll call on you, ma'am. Thank you.
I'm just wondering, is it the will of the board that I look up current language that is currently out there and bring back to the board for some current language?
We get to the end of the public testimony, I'm going to support that. So Sheriff, did you have anything else?
No, I just wanted to make her aware and hope that she feels comfortable with the actions that we plan on taking initially on this. And before, you know, an ordinance gets drafted or what code enforcement can deal with or whatever, we will patrol, do ex-patrol in that area. And if we have the, we see the issue, we can knock on the door and say, hey, can you please turn it down? Whether that helps at all, a lot of times it does. Usually when we leave, it's, it's right back to the way it was. And, and if we leave, it's like we're heading to another call, so.
Thank you, Sheriff. Did you have anything else?
No, sir.
You're welcome to come with the microphone. Yes, please.
I understand what the sheriff is saying. The fellows, they come with their hands out like, what do you want me to do? When they get called, they're sick of me too. This isn't an individual, it's not road issue. It's not a truck going down the road that has to get to work by 6:00 in the morning that they're mufflers. This is deliberate music, deliberate. They're doing it because they can. That's all I'm asking is if a sheriff is called where I can't stand it anymore. These people were partying all night long, driving around drunk. But the sheriff told me, we can't stop that car unless we have probable cause. I'm telling you, they've been partying since last night at midnight. What's probable cause? This is, you know, I know they're, this drug thing is, you know, they don't care about that anymore, but drinking and driving still. And I know they're probably doing drugs. I'm just going to say it. But this is deliberate music, deliberate, because they know they can get away with it. It's not his fault. It's something has to be done for my rights as living next door. That's all I'm asking is there, if a sheriff comes out and I call him, I'm not faking it. He needs to go over there and say, hey, these people next door saying you're a little loud, man. Turn it down, turn that subwoofer off. That's all I'm asking, period.
Thank you.
Not much, just turn it down.
And it's a rental, he said.
It's a rental.
It's a rental, yeah.
So, yeah, and the owner doesn't care, obviously. He's been told and told and told and told. Anyway, I appreciate you guys listening to me. I hope you can help me. I know maybe the sheriffs can, they tried. There's some nice guys out there.
Yeah.
With board approval, I'll get to that this week.
Well, you all have my number.
Okay.
Anything else on this? We move on. So I think you have a board consensus that we'd appreciate if you would take the lead on this. And I think we can move forward.
You're done.
Do we have a tentative schedule when you might be looking at it? Somebody mentioned that?
I may hopefully have something for you next week, but I'll alert our Director of Operations if I get something to get it on the agenda.
Okay, so what used to be Item 3, used to be Item 3A is now 3B, revising a job description and developing related programs. Director Rickert?
Okay, so I, I'll assume that you've all kind of read through the attachments to this ARS and just, just kind of highlight a few parts of it. So last year, we created a new economic development assistant who is Ms. Plagie. And we, and she's been doing that for a while. And she was hired mainly to serve as business license contacts, collects the TLT, work on the promo committee, Main Street, travel Creek Coast website, promote county on social media. She does, she also does a little backup work for, for JJ and assists with filming the, these meetings. That role has changed quite a bit. She's been pulled in several different directions. And so the point of this is to revise her job description and maybe hopefully have, let her branch out into some different areas that will be useful for the county. Things such as, as, let's see, contracting with some, some professional marketing firms to, to promote the county using TLT dollars for that. Contributing for services being used by commissioners, advancing the county's relationship with the film industry, as well as some, some of the other things. Helping businesses that have no online presence have a greater online presence. Thus, especially with the pandemic going on and businesses shutting down will hopefully help to bring in some, some extra revenues that they would not have had otherwise. So if the, if the board is in agreement, I'd like to bring it back at a different time to, or on a, on a regular meeting to, with a revised job description as well as a revised title that would more closely align with, with Ms. Plagie's with what she is currently doing and her, her, her film.
Understand, good. This is not an urgent, do you feel it's urgent? I'm kind of mixed.
Probably not urgent. It's probably something we want to do sooner than later, just to, and she, she's, she's doing the job already. It'd be good to have the job description updated with, with her updated titles so that it coincides with everything she is doing. If it's put off a couple of weeks, it's, it's, it is, it's okay.
Mr. Pash?
I just, a couple of things I see that, you know, might take a little bit of time to get worked up that I'd like to see before revising the job description would be any contracts, like it speaks of here, that we have of doing film work. Somebody may come back and say, hey, you promised me that you were going to double my business by doing this film work. So, you know, maybe having language in these contracts that we're not responsible, you know, release a liability, those kind of things. Just to help the county to be insulated, might be things to consider. And possibly any contracts that you would have, that you may consider to have somebody sign that the board would be able to look at, the language and, and our county council, more importantly than us, to make sure that our liability is minimal.
Yeah, I'd like to see a contract with Gold Beach Main Street to really explain what we're doing for them. The other thing is, point number one here says that we would use our TLT dollars to contract with a professional marketing firm to promote the county on that website. And then, but, and then we would become some kind of a professional marketing firm for, and use our website to professionally market for local businesses. Why don't we just have those local businesses go on the first website that we'd be contracting with? I mean, I'm, I, I don't like the idea of us getting into the commercial advertising business. That's a, that's kind of fraught with peril. We'd be competing against commercial advertising businesses. And we'd be using our public airwaves to promote private enterprise, which I think is fraught with peril. So I, I have really some issues with some of the proposals in here. You cannot use PEG funds to pay people. It's for capital only. That's number four and number eight here. I don't quite understand where that came from. So there's just a lot of issues with this. It needs a lot of work before I think I could agree to give it a legal pass. But there's a lot of details to work out. I'm not saying it's insurmountable, but some of it doesn't even make sense. But in the meantime, a lot of legal work to be done, a lot of contracts to review.
And we did go with this, we did go with this a month ago. And I made quite a few notes. And, you know, I don't, I think I'd rather hear from Coordinator Madison and Miranda Plagie, just each a couple of minutes, if they want to contribute to this. I honestly thought about pulling this off the agenda today, just to, just to table it, not because it's not a good priority, but just as we're moving forward with a new commissioner, a new direction, new software. I mean, all the above, trying to coordinate all this. I think we have an opportunity to do something pretty special, but it could also, you know, if we're not careful, the wheels could come off. So I think we're on the right track. So Coordinator Madison, did you have anything you wanted to offer later now? Okay. And by the way, this, this information Julie Smelzer offered, like I say, a month ago. And, you know, it's, it's fairly good content, I have, in my opinion. you know, it's fairly good content, I have, in my opinion, so but as Council Huddle said, it's, you know, there's some, there's some potential quicksands in here, so go ahead. Thank you.
Miranda Plagie, Economic Development Assistant. So as far as the, why this sort of came up, I think Julie sort of recognized sort of the workload that I was doing. And as far as that workload, that I wasn't giving, you know, all the programs that I'm doing a hundred percent because of the constant juggling. Some of the roles that I took up, you know, temporarily, just to see how things would work. For instance, like working with other departments, if they had technology issues, or for instance, setting them up on a Zoom meeting and getting them going. So, she sat down with me and asked sort of what I envisioned my role to be, because she thought my role was sort of evolving in a sense. So, we sort of talked about some of my ideas and how I would love to certainly expand what we're doing with media. I think we sort of sit in a media desert here, in the southern part of Oregon. And we have an opportunity to perhaps engage the public a little bit more. I do realize that there are a lot of stipulations and rules when it comes to that sort of thing. So it would be something that we'd have to certainly flesh out. I've had a couple of conversations with council on what that would look like. And, you know, I am in agreement that I don't want to put the county in any sort of jeopardy. So there are, there are some ideas that need to be flushed out. I think that AGRS was sort of put together very quickly. So I think that's what you're reading, is that there's a lot of thoughts there and not a lot of content. So I'm more than willing to actually come back and expand on it a little bit more, with a little more detail in what I think we can do, for instance, with media and my role.
And I think that's a good approach.
Miranda, I'll be happy to work with you on any parameters of, you know, the ideas you have here, but there, there can be real issues if we're trying to basically run commercials on our.
Right, and I, I do understand a lot of that. I have certainly, of course, put in a lot of the research as far as like what I can't do, what I can't do, as, you know, since we are funded by PEG, so.
Can you do something about the glare off of the?
Believe it or not, getting better lighting in here is one of the things that I wanted to do, I just haven't had the time to get to it.
All right, because JJ and I are.
Well, for instance, a lot of people who are standing here lose a lot of light, so.
Miranda, thanks, so we will look forward to hearing back from you. If you want to take this original proposal that hasn't been changed and mark it up in red, so we know what your recommendations are, I think that would be very beneficial. And by the way, Commissioner Herzog, by the end of your four years, you're gonna have a twin there. If not, within two years.
Maybe sooner.
So, any other further discussion on this? So, okay, next on projects is 3C.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Summer.
Oh. Throw something at me.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to hear about the adjustments in Miranda's position, Summer Madison, Economic Development. I think as we're looking to restructure the county and maybe some of those departments, and we stick with what the strategic plan outlines and the economic development strategic plan, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, especially during a pandemic. With, with FTE of 1.5 since March has been a real challenge for us to keep up. And when we hired for an economic development assistant, it was the understanding that that would be a full-time position in economic development. And I'm hoping that you consider that that's an important consideration, given how many times that's called out in our strategic plan. As far as marketing and media training goes, we have a consistent resource for that at SBDC. That's the South Coast Business Development Center. And, and there are partnerships and opportunities that we can pull from without overlapping. We've had some outreach from the tourism partners locally. Just making sure that we're all filling the gaps and not overstepping, especially during the pandemic. Just making sure we're as efficient as possible. The other thing I'd like to mention is that the Curry County Voices is a nonprofit volunteer organization that focuses on training youth in videography, and they also put an emphasis on producing for nonprofits and small businesses in the area. And so I'd like you to take that into consideration as well, as you look to develop a film program. I think a film program or any kind of program similar to that is a luxury. I'm sure most counties can't really afford right now. And so we, we really think about our priorities in economic development as we move forward.
Thank you. Anybody else that needs to talk on this subject? So we have several people here, sometimes we do a public comment in workshops, sometimes we don't.
Public comments are after.
Is it actually on the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's after.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I missed that, okay, great, so we'll delay on that. So we have three projects, as I mentioned earlier, I think they're somewhat related. Depends on how your, what your outlook is. But we have the Commissioner Laison assignments, we have, no, not noise ordinance. We have the workshop on NeoGov and OpenGov. We have reorganizing the BACH office. We have Curry Director of Operations. I think that's a, I'm not sure what everybody wants to, as far as a public comment goes. That's not specific. That's specific. Concerns, et cetera. Reorganization, restructuring, just workshop. Okay, so what's the pleasure of the board here, the five of us that are, that are sitting here, that, how we, how we might proceed? My preference would be to talk about the Director of Operations first. And that can go into a pretty important, you know, evolve into other important subjects related. Your, your public comment was on noise abatement. Did you want to talk about noise again? No? Well, again, the public comments are at the bottom, so that was my mistake, so go ahead, Ms. Madison.
So I have a public comment I did put in for vacation, so that there was no conflict in presenting that public comment. If it's going to be afterwards, I'll just return to my office and come back when it's time.
Want to take the public comments first?
Well.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people waiting, is why I held up the cards and looked at them, and there might be more. So, Summer, you were first on the list, it's not numbered, normally John does what numbers, I'm not a big deal.
Well, I, I submitted mine before the hearing room was open.
You were number one, that's correct, thank you.
Summer Madison, resident of Gold Beach. Thank you for giving me three minutes, Commissioners. With the exception of Commissioner Herzog, I've addressed my concerns with you in the past, one-on-one. I've also shared my sentiments with every administrator or Director of Operations since my employment started with Curry County. I want to express my gratitude for the opportunity to be heard. I assure you that there would be more like me here if they weren't in fear of losing their jobs or retaliation. I understand the board is considering a reorganization of county departments. I believe the end goal is efficiency. With that, I ask you to consider a thorough and transparent understanding of where those changes might start. I believe, as I have shared historically, that we consider the broken infrastructure in operations of the county. There is considerable disconnect in procedures overall. Security in the position of the Director of Operations provides continuity that county employees need to be successful. With election of a commissioner, there is no requirement of management experience, professional development, or administrative skill set. Keeping a liaison between the Board of Commissioners and departments provides needed consistency and development of systematic needs. Onboarding of new employees. The process and procedure of what is required for a new employee is fractured. Starting a new job without thorough understanding of internal functions can be defeating. It also sets a precedence of expectations and complacency. Professional development that includes tools, resources, and training opportunities to expand and further knowledge in our areas of expertise lacks. We lack a system for procurement in regards to a historical accounting of projects and efforts made that would lend to some of the projects that cycle through our offices. Outside of active docs, this is usually learned only by word of mouth. You see, the lack of efficiency in production is not due to the staff that you have hired. In my opinion, it lends a great deal to the lack of a strong and consistent foundation. One of the primary examples that I'm excited about, as you look to change and procure some of that infrastructure, is the movement forward on open.gov and the example that that sets for efficiencies in operations for all of us. Your employees are not liabilities, they are assets. When I look at the amount of time an employee has drawn into the politics of the county outside of their job duties, it ends up costing the taxpayers a lot of money. And when I see the fear and self-doubt of employees as their job security is threatened, I am assured their productivity is hindered. When employees are not investing in long-term projects and planning because they don't want to lose their job and leave a community partner or agency hanging, I see this strategic plan not being an asset. COVID-19 has brought employees of Curry County more challenges than ever. We fear being infected, we scramble to make sure our children are being educated, we worry about childcare, grocery shopping, depression, keeping our bills paid, not seeing our family, emotionally supporting our coworkers, and potentially losing our jobs. And more than ever, this is the time that we need to stand unified and sustain what structure we have and grow it and reconsider how our actions are perceived by our constituents. It is an honor and a privilege to hold the position I do in the county. I recall with excitement, I had the day I was offered the position here, and I cling to that feeling every day. I see every day how difficult it is to make changes that impact the livelihoods of your employees. I implore you to consider a deeper look into the security of this county, so that it does not crumble and further divide as employees are turned against one another amidst turmoil. You are the leaders of this great county, and we are counting on you to do that with the utmost integrity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Madison. Okay, next we have David Barnes, you're next on the list.
David Barnes, I had put in to speak as you were discussing the noise ordinance. Since I wasn't taken at that time, my comments are moot, thank you.
Chet Brewer, next on the list. How about Courtney Rickert? Please? Welcome. Oh, Chet, I'm sorry. You're wel, that's okay, you're welcome.
Chet Brewer, taxpayer citizen, I also work facilities maintenance. One of the first things I want to say is welcome, Mr. Herzog, we haven't been formally introduced, so, and Commissioners and everybody else. Hi there. I come to you with some concerns, as a board. I really feel, and I've seen a big turn here in the last six months with staff managers, other people here. I'm not actually sure of a way to fix or try and remedy this problem, and I guess that's one of the reasons why I'm bringing you here, is to try and ask you guys to help figure out why we have employees, including myself, that are scared to talk, are scared to bring things to the table, are scared to discuss their feelings and how we can work together as a team to make this work better. And I'm asking you guys, as a commissioner and even everybody in here, to try and help figure out a plan to try and fix that. It's been an ongoing problem, as I think everybody's willing to admit here, or should, I would hope. So that's just one of them, ultimately. I ask you to try and help. And/or help me figure out the best way to try and do this. Because it's getting to the point where it's medically affecting people. It's affecting the county outside of even our working atmosphere, personal atmospheres. It's just not good business, and I'm concerned as a citizen, as an employee of the county. Any how can we try and help overcome this fear? And even amongst myself, for that matter, of the retaliation that may come for speaking up, for saying, you know, things that you see that are wrong, we need to work on, obviously. I don't see a method here, it's always a blurred out, a spurt, this needs to be fixed, we gotta do this. I'd like to try and figure out a plan, and I'll vouch for, raise my hand, anything I can do to try and help. Something's got to change. I don't see us going in a positive direction, in my opinion, at this point. A bunch of different items, and I'm trying to do it within that three minute. I do understand the stresses of COVID, is not helping any of this in any way, shape, or form, for many different reasons, on a professional, personal level. So I hope you understand, I do know that. But I also think we can work through this a lot better than how we have been working, even prior to me being here, years in past. I really I've never seen things happen quite like they do here, within the other government agencies I've worked, and I really hope that there's something I can do to try and be a part of fixing that for the employees, for the citizens, for everybody. I mean, I don't, I hate the idea of coming in here and seeing people dread coming into work, concerned how they feel, not being able even to go to their manager for fear of retaliation. There's even been words used of losing their jobs or pushed out. That's concerning to me, we are not, as, and when I speak this, I say leaders, as all of us here, in my opinion, are leaders, we are not portraying that, in my opinion, and from what I have seen since I've been here.
Thank you.
I really truly hope that there's something we can do to try and work on that and just a couple of things, I really think the medical aspect of this, where it's starting to affect people medically. And I mean, a lot of people, I understand, are different and handle emotions and mental states of things different. But I can even say for myself, medically, this is costing me my health, financially, my family's health. I think it's very important, and I am asking and begging for you guys to look at, let's fix that problem before we start moving on and changing other things. Because we can't get anywhere if we don't have teamwork and solidarity, in my opinion. I do want to tell you, thank you guys for your time, and I will be waiting outside if there's any more. And for that matter, does anybody have any questions for me, why I'm up here?
I have a question.
Director Rickert?
When you talk about your health, you're talking about the atmosphere that you feel like you're coming to work is affecting your, your health. Is that, just make sure I understand.
I have documentation, if you need that documentation, for that, medical documentation. And it's not just me, I try not, I don't want to speak for everyone else, but obviously I see it, I hear it. And what we do here, we do get around to see all the other different departments within the county, I mean, all the way even down to South County. It's here, I almost want to call it a toxic sickness. I can't come up with a better word for it. People are scared. And again, COVID is not helping, but the way we've been doing business lately, I don't feel, again, in my opinion, is safe for the employees, or the citizens, or even ourselves.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I really appreciate the time, opportunity to speak.
Ms. Rickert? Welcome.
I actually have a few things I'd like to hand to you guys, if I can do that for a minute.
Thank you.
I feel like this muffles my voice a bit, so I'm just gonna take it off. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, my name is Courtney Rickert, I am from Brookings. I'm here today to talk about the discussion on the, the agenda today that is with the reorganization of the BOC office, most specifically what I read in the attached packet that Commissioner Boyce you put out, saying you have a legitimate concern that the, that the Director of Operations, Brad Rickert, needs to be released from his managerial duties. That you said that you feel like he's being very distracted by people that are coming to him with his concerns, with their concerns or their needs. And you said you wanted to start the conversation.
And, uh, you said you wanted to start the conversation and encourage as many to participate as possible, so I'm here to participate. I was very concerned in reading about this, I was concerned about the language of it, most especially that it talks about the employees' needs as a distraction. I think that that's really negative language to say that employees coming with their needs and concerns is a distraction. It should be, um, a vital part of a manager's job to listen to their employees' needs. I also was curious, I wanted to check and see the other counties of Oregon to see how many of them have Director of Operations or admin positions. Frankly, I was shocked. I researched all thirty-six counties, there was only one that I could, actually two. There were two, one that I could not find any information on their website, and one which is Cuse County, that I could not find that they had some sort of a administrative assistant or administrative director. I detailed out, I copied, um, from the websites themselves that are directly from each, um, county's website, the populations that are thirty-seven thousand and under. So you could see how they have either a county manager, an administrative offer, officer, or a county administrative officer, and what they do to help the county. Frankly, as I have written here in this letter to you guys, I'm pretty astounded that this would be a position that you would talk about eliminating, most especially because what I've read in the descriptions of this from the other counties and from your own county, is that this is a position that is here to support you as a board. It's here to support you to enact the, the procedures and the policies that you guys create, to make sure that the day-to-day operations go smoothly, um, to make sure that the employees are protected, that they have somebody else that they can come to, to take the workload off of you so that you don't have to do those everyday tasks. So it seems pretty odd and counterproductive to talk about going backwards and taking away a vital component to this county and to your office as actually a positive light and a step forward. That doesn't seem logical to me. I have also heard that, um, some of you commissioners may feel like the voice of the public is that they do not want this position. That is inaccurate. You've heard the voices of several people today say that they do want this position. If this is a legitimate concern, bring it to the people. Let us be heard. People are here today because they looked up and they know about the situation that's going on, the people that are not here today are not aware of it. Put it to a vote of the people then, if that is your biggest concern. Listen to the voices who are supposed to govern you guys, basically. Our voices should be heard. My heart goes out to the person who last spoke. Um, I think Curry County is a beautiful place. I'm here partially because of that. I love the beauty of this land, it's serene, it's peaceful, it brings comfort to people's lives. This county should be a place that you work in, where you should feel the same way, where you should feel peaceful and protected, where you shouldn't feel retaliation or anger or feel like people are trying to take your job away from them. It's not a positive environment to be in. And honestly, um, from another personal note, this position being offered, that was your word three months ago, that this was the position that Director Rickert was going to overtake, one week after the outgoing Director of Operations was, had left and put in her letter of resignation to leave, this position is now being looked at as getting rid of. That does, that sounds deceitful, very deceitful, and it erodes public trust. And I think that that's a very dangerous line to go down. These are my thoughts, and thank you for your consideration, and I urge you, please, look at the packet, look at the structures of the other counties. It will look very odd for our county to take a step backwards, and it would not be a good choice for you to cut off a lifeline to help yourselves out. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Rickert?
Oh, yes, did you have a question?
If I could, please, just for the record?
Yes.
Um, you're Director of Operations, uh, Brad's wife?
Yes.
And you moved your family here for this position from Utah, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you've since purchased a home in this area?
We have, and the, um, I will say that honestly, this was not the job that I was wanting for my husband. It, um, it took a lot of convincing, but he was excited. He's excited to come in and make the changes, he's excited to help people, he loves what he's doing. It takes a lot of time away from my three beautiful children. It is a, um, it is a blessing that you have him, because we had many other offers, more lucrative, but this was the one that we felt was the best to do.
I, I, I want to ask you a question there, was my understanding that you had already moved to Brookings?
I had moved ahead in a rental, but I was headed back.
Okay, but in, within Curry County, you had several other lucrative opportunities?
No, not within Curry County that were more lucrative. He did have other opportunities outside of it, but there were remote opportunities that would still allow us to be here if needed.
Okay.
Um, I also have a one for you here too, since you've been here, so thank you very much.
We'll make a copy for him. We'll make a copy for him. Next is Aaron Johnson?
I'm here today because I want to speak very plainly. My name is Aaron Johnson. I am a Curry County business owner. I serve on the Curry County Fair Board. I am the Chair of the Tourism Promotion Committee. I am the Secretary of the Gold Beach Chamber of Commerce. I am a mother, I'm a citizen of this county, I'm also the other half of our Emergency Service Coordinator, Jeremy Dumire. And I'm tired. You'll have to excuse me if my voice is shaking. I have only lived here going on two years. I have watched all of these commissioner meetings since I've been here. I've gotten to know many of you in this room, doing personal projects for you, Mr. Boyce, and for many of the departments in this building. I have spoken to so many of your staff members, electeds, and people who work here, and they're all disheartened. The behaviors that are happening are unprofessional. I don't see how any of you want to get up and go to work every day. I really implore this board to start working together to make a better plan, to make a less toxic work environment to better this county, because this county is not moving forward right now, it's moving backwards. It's to the point where it's hurting. To listen to my friends, to my other half, talk about his position, to see where this county's going, and I'm just tired of it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Emma Durrock, please?
Good day, gentlemen. My name is Emma Durrock. Since apparently this is the wives' hour, I am married to the current Parks Director, Anthony Durrock. Um, I am here to echo the sentiments of so many that have come before me. People lose sleep, people are scared, people are not following through with things that they have been planning on doing because they don't know what their livelihoods look like right now. People feel under attack, there is physical repercussions of this, there are mental repercussions of this. This is no way for people to feel about, not jobs, these are careers, these are the things that are, are held to the highest standard in our county. We are the county employees. These people should not be forced to look for other work because they are afraid every single day that their job is on the line. I do not know the records, and, um, I'm sorry if I am speaking for you, but I would like to speak on your behalf in that I find it very inappropriate that as a county, we reached out, we recruited these people, we asked them to move here and serve our county. And for what? For them to get here and be told, sorry, the job you came for may or may not be yours, to be shut down in meetings and told to their face, maybe in a day, maybe in a week, maybe in a month, that's not going to be your job? How can you expect people to sleep well at night, knowing that they uprooted their entire lives? To move somewhere, to serve a county, to serve the beautiful people of Curry County? There is nowhere better to live, but not under these circumstances. How in the future are we to recruit strong employees if they are constantly under the fear of perhaps that job may not be there in a week or when they, I don't know, displease those in charge? Um, I don't think it's acceptable that people are living like this, that... There aren't many of us here, this is friends, this is family, this is neighbors, these are our community members, the ones that we rely on when you have a flat tire or you need some assistance doing something. This is our community. How are we not getting along here? How are we not all trying to do everything we can to hold each other up and better each other and support each other in every available way? There shouldn't be people that have to come in here and plead about their inability to sleep and concern that their job is not theirs tomorrow. Every day feeling that way, in the middle of a pandemic, in the middle of everything else going on here, that level of uncertainty should not stand. People should not be forced to feel this way, and I find it incredibly uncomfortable that there are just so many people scared to speak on what's happening because they know the repercussions, they know that this means losing careers, losing what they worked for, possibly leaving their community, because there simply isn't the opportunity to just go find other things to do to support families. And, you know, if we're really standing for our county and we are standing for our families here, we need to be supporting each other, so thank you for your time, I appreciate you hearing me.
Thank you.
Thank you, I, as far as I know, that is the end of our public comments. Anybody else in the audience who are not overlooking here? Commissioners want to respond?
I, I would.
Commissioner Herzog, please.
You know, when I took this, um, position or, uh, applied to be a county commissioner at the beginning of 2020, um, and went through all the process, I was one of those who voted, I think it was twice on the ballot, to have a home rule, or not to have a home rule, or a charter in the county. And overwhelmingly, it not, did not pass two times that it was on the ballot. So I, I hear the folks and I hear your, the discontent and, and the heartache, but as a, as a, you know, I'm going to step back here and say, as a, as a voting citizen and a, and a longtime member of Curry County, I never wanted, um, a Director of Operations, and this is nothing. I, I just met Brad and I, he's a, he's, I'm, I'm not talking just about Brad, I'm just talking about the position of Director of Operations. Curry County did not have one for a lot of years. Was there a Director of Operations, George, uh, George Rhodes was a commissioner years ago, there was none. I, I kind of ran on a little bit of a platform of a county, a commissioner-run county, and so... And I, I, I see, I don't think it's been enacted since, like, for three years or so, it's been, it's about that old or something, three or, three or four years? And so I'm just wondering, as, as a new commissioner, was there this level of discontent and, and emotional distress prior to a Director of Operations? I, I don't know, that's a, that's a question. I tell you, I'm not here, I don't want anybody fired, that's not, that's not why I ran for county commissioner.
Isn't that why we're here, to avoid that?
Right, so, um, I, I want this board, Chris and, and Court and I, to be, um, you know, unified as a board of, of commissioners and to support our employees. I... So what, what I, my thinking is, if we didn't have this level of discontent and, and emotional distress prior to the Director of Operations, could that be the problem? Not that we're going to get rid of Brad, but the... What I see, uh, as the Board of Commissioners overseeing liaisons to the direct, the, um, and forgive me for my not knowing the lingo and the direction, you know, the, uh, direct, um, words for department heads, that's a big hard one, isn't it? Yeah, right, so, department heads, your employees come to the department heads, and there's a department head has a, it, it needs to go farther, it comes to the Board of Commissioners. I think that's the way it ran at one time. David, David, uh, Barnes is shaking his head, I, he knows more than I do, I guess, and, but I, George, George was a commissioner, is that the way?
You're going to pull him up to talk sooner or later, aren't you?
I am, yeah. I mean, we got it, we got history here.
Rhodes, Brookings, Oregon. In the past, the county worked under a general law charter, which it still is. The commissioners ran and worked full-time, and they were assigned liaison departments, and each department head, if there was an issue, came to their department liaison commissioner and would have a discussion, and if they didn't get satisfaction, it might go to the full board. Obviously, every department head had the ability to go to any commissioner, we all had an open door policy, so, uh, the first step usually was to the liaison commissioner, though. And it, it did work fairly well, uh, for the most part. I think what changed was some folks decided to suggest that they would work part-time and hire a county administrator if they were elected, and they did get elected, and I think they did work part-time for a short period of time, and then at some point that changed, and commissioners were still being paid full-time, working part-time, and paying for an administrator. So there's been a lot of misinformation about what's happened and what hasn't happened in the county. Um, I'm, I can't speak to how the county's run since I left office. I think we were pretty effective, I think we got quite a bit of stuff done when I was a county commissioner. Did we make some bad decisions? Probably, but we made decisions, and we made what we thought, based on the information we had, was the best decision for the county. I think you have somebody who's been here for thirty-two years as the assessor, that probably knows a lot more about the county than I do. So, thank you. Hope I answered your question.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Commissioner Pash?
Well, I, uh, I will echo a part of Commissioner Herzog's comments. When I ran for office, I ran against having an administrator. That was part of my campaign. I did not want to see an administrator in the county. I felt as though, uh, commissioners needed to be very involved in the departments of the county. But what I did run on was bringing Ms. Schmelzer back as a Director of Operations. There's, there's a difference, I believe, in an administrator who has full control, as we've seen here. I don't think it was successful at all, and those are my opinions, um, on, uh, on having the administrator here that we had. I agreed during my campaign with Commissioner Boyce, as we had several meetings before I was sworn in, and we even had meetings with, uh, Mr. Cole and his wife about different things and how they were done here, and I, I agreed that an administrator here probably was not a good idea, but I did, uh, as, as did Commissioner Boyce, fully support bringing Ms. Schmelzer back here as a Director of Operations. And we even struggled with her title, not to associate it with an administrative title, but to bring it back as a Director of the Operations under the Board, and what we became was a conduit, she became was a conduit from the department heads to the commissioners. And in this day and age, and the legal state that this nation is in, I fully supported that because I felt a conduit between, not only did an employee have their, their manager to go to, and then if they didn't get satisfaction, they could then go to a Director of Operations before they had to go to a Board, because I believe Boards are more to set policies and, and do the day-to-days of the county than they are to get involved in the personal business of different departments. So having a Director of Operations, to me, was, was a perfect fit. They did no hiring without permission of the Board, they did no firing without the permission of the Board, they did, other than the Sheriff's Department, the Sheriff's Department is a standalone organization. We, they got no raises, all of those kind of things. And then the department heads, we asked for, to come forward and help direct the Board as the liaisons for those departments. So it was always a good fit to have a, a Director of Operations for me, and at that time, Commissioner Boyce whole, wholeheartedly supported it, um, and even, as I said, had several meetings, uh, off-location, um, to bring Ms. Schmelzer in, talk about the future of Curry County as that position, um, helped design the position and conversations, um, and, and what the expectations of Ms. Schmelzer would be. He contributed to those contributions as well. Fully supported it and actually... Fully supported it and actually Commissioner Gold voted against it. She thought it was, you know, there should be an administrator. She voted with Tom Huxley, which I disagreed with.
May I just, on that clarification, she didn't like Julie Schmelzer at the beginning. She recovered on that. I just, thank you for letting me interrupt, but I think we need to make sure we have that clear there. Thank you.
But I think on a larger note, was she wanted an administrator and we didn't. We didn't want the administrator part of it. So, Commissioner Boyce and I, again, without bringing it all back, agreed fully on it. You know, for me, I feel a lot of people's pain here because I've had a lot of people call me in the last few weeks with a lot of concerns. And I don't mean this disrespectfully against you, but I think it's transparency of where we are. I've had people consider, you know, call me about different things that are happening in the county and the possibility of reorganization of the county offices. They have great concerns that Commissioner Boyce donated a lot of money to your campaign to get you elected. It was almost $3,000 that he gave to newspaper articles in support of you for your election. So now they see you on the board and Commissioner Boyce is asking you to vote on things that have grave concerns for a lot of people in the county. So I'm just saying, the look of that, it tarnishes the county. And I'm not saying there was any intent on anyone's part of your part to do that.
But Chris, can I just say one thing real quick? Because if you can look online, it's all, it's all public. There was, he never gave me $3,000.
No, I'm saying he gave to you. He supported your campaign. And even on your, the advertisements in the newspaper, it said, "Voice for Oregon," paid for by "Voice from Oregon."
Well, and along those lines, I even said at one time, I always used to, I'd tell everybody, "I'd like to be half the man my dog thinks I am." And after Court's glowing article in the paper, I changed that to, "I just want to be half the commissioner Court thinks I'm going to be." So that's just a point of lightness, maybe, but...
So, to continue, I'm just saying that these are a lot of the concerns that I'm getting from people. You know, Mr. Rickard and his family. I've had many calls from people saying, "Here's a guy that, his wife and kids, their three kids, yes, she was already here, but she, as she stated, they were looking for a job and wherever Mr. Rickard ended up, she was going to go there with him." Here's a family that moved here and now have bought a home that were looking to possibly... And again, for me, as a commissioner, I heard Commissioner Chair Boyce the other day on two occasions on Monday at a meeting, just say, "Well, I'm not sure where he even going to have that position in a few weeks," or words to that effect, to the board and to Director of Operations Rickard. I was almost floored when I heard that. I mean, to say that outwardly in a public meeting to someone without ever discussing it, CIS, I've talked into CIS, spoken to CIS about this. CIS said that should never even be mentioned in a meeting without discussing it first with council and CIS as our insurance company because it puts the county in liability. Council may want to talk on that later, but I'm saying what a conversation with Ms. Katie Cameron I had, and she said that should never even be brought up in a meeting, in an open meeting. That should always be discussed first in private and executive session, and she should be in on that meeting or CIS should be. So, these are things that are happening right now that have given me grave concern. Let me look at my notes real quick. I've already spoken on the administrator versus an open. You know, we talked about Ms. Schmelzer leaving and why she left. I want to say publicly, Julie Schmelzer is probably the smartest government employee I've ever known personally. Do I think everything she did and the way she did it was correct? No. I think her approach to different things, her and I disagreed on certain things, but she could think of things off the top of her head that you just sometimes sit down and scratch your head and go. Talk about thinking out of the box, as she was found guilty of many times. She was very creative in her thinking on how to do different things and provided a balanced budget to this county for 2021 for the first time in many, many years. She left here in her resignation letter in July. Her comments were she could no longer be part of a county where she felt like things were not, only not being done properly, but she felt there were some things that were done that were not legal. And she could no longer participate in that. For whatever reason, that created the position to start to look for Mr. Rickard to come I want to say, a lot of the discontent that I think we have between liaisons and/or our employees and the board is because of micromanagement. Largely because we have spoken a lot about people getting out of their lanes and comments being made. I just, I can't imagine being a, you know, Mr. Rickard and hearing the other day, "Well, you might not even be here in a couple of weeks, so I don't know what we're going to do yet."
Could you clarify that, please?
Words to that effect, if we'd like to, maybe JJ could bring up in the minutes Monday's meeting on a couple of times where you made comments.
That he may not be here in a couple of weeks.
Your job may not exist in a few weeks.
It totally falls. I'm sorry. Totally falls. I said, "We may not have a Director of Operations," but I'll have my, I'll have my time to talk.
That's basically the job not here anymore. And I said, "Words to that effect." I didn't say a quote. I said, "Words to that effect."
Yeah, but it's very effective when you want to, wow.
Well, to say to somebody who may not have a job and your position may not be here in a couple of weeks, or to say to somebody, "A Director of Operations position may not be here in a few weeks," is just slicing a bread in a different direction.
Goodness sakes. That's terrible.
Please don't interrupt me. Please.
Continue on.
Thank you. But anyway, I think a large, a large part of what is happening in this county right now is with our employees, is a discontent of our employees of being micromanaged, being told their jobs when they already know their jobs, being asked to report things that it is not in the commissioner's authority to report. It is, again, the employees positioned to report to the Director of Operations and then forward from there. So, I think that's a lot of the discontent in this. And I think for this moment, I'm going to stop talking from there. Those are my comments for right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Pash. Thank you, Commissioner Herzog.
Mr. Commissioner, I was mentioning in...
I'm going to give you plenty of time to talk, but I'm a little anxious here. But go ahead, sir.
And what I want to do is, if I could, for the record, before Mr. Cole talks, is I'm going to set this tablet right here and not write on it. Because I want to say something after everyone's done. Something I wrote on there.
You can take whatever time you need because I...
I guess the reason that I decided to jump up, Commissioner Pash, is because you mentioned that you and I had had conversations before you were elected and even after you were elected with regards to county administrator, Director of Operations. And I just wanted to clarify for the record that I did not suggest that we should have a Director of County Operations. In fact, I told both you and Commissioner Boyce at that time that I thought Clark Schroeder was doing a pretty decent job and I thought that we should keep him around and give him the opportunity to prove himself to the then-new board. So, that's just a clarification. What I would say is, looking back and Commissioner Rhodes mentioned it, and Commissioner Herzog alluded to it, is, and this takes away nothing from Mr. Rickard. Mr. Rickard's only been Director of County Operations for two days now or whatever it's I really believe that before this county went to a county administrator or a Director of Operations, it seemed to work pretty well when the liaison commissioners had a higher level of supervision over department heads and they conducted the employee evaluations of those department heads. And I'm going to agree, there wasn't the level in those days of the stress that we're feeling in this last two years. And it's worse in this last two years, Commissioner Herzog, than I've ever seen it. But, I don't think it's as widespread as what it's portrayed to be. You know, I think there's departments around the county where the departments are quietly conducting their business. And, you know, I'd venture to say you could go through those departments and not find anybody losing sleep at night. It's too bad that anybody is. What I have heard from Commissioner Boyce is he highly respects Mr. Rickard and his financial abilities. And that's been consistent ever since Mr. Rickard's been with us or even before he was hired. I mean, I heard that from the interviews. And I have no reason to disagree with that either. So, well, I mean, one other thing you said, Commissioner Pash, is that this last year was the first year that Curry County has had a balanced budget. I've never known Curry County not to have a balanced budget. And I've been around more than 35 years.
By law, our budget has to balance every year.
Who was that back there?
Well, you know who that was.
That was my meaning. I didn't say that. Balance without using road funds. I didn't say...
The budget was balanced without road funds when I left office, 2014.
I said, "In many years."
I might ask you to come up and repeat that into the microphone, sir. Thank you. Continue on, go ahead.
I said the, I said for four years, the balance, the budget was balanced all four years and we didn't use road funds. Any of those four years.
Those years, we had forest funds.
We had four years, we had limited SRS payments. Don't get on the budget with me. I know I'm really bad.
So, you know, I'm not up here to try and antagonize you, Commissioner Pash, or antagonize anybody else. It's, we're, we have a new Board of Commissioners. It doesn't seem unreasonable to start, you know, to have some conversations about whether or not Curry County could be more efficient and how that might take place. I wish you all well in that effort and I'll do what I can to help you out with that effort. You know, I've told you all before that I've got my own thing that I've got to do and, you know, I can't solve these problems for you and not just because I have my own thing that I have to do, but, you know, I wouldn't want to be in your shoes either to try and balance these budgets with difficulties that Curry County has facing it. So, I wish you well. That's it.
You might want to stay close. Come on up, Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I'd like to make a comment on this.
I'm going to have my turn.
I would like to apologize for my little outburst. I'd like to apologize for my little outburst there. I just have been so misfilled with so many misfacts lately with the coronavirus and everything else going on, that I think it's important that when people speak up about something, they have the information. And the information regarding the budgets, there again, it is a requirement in state law that the budget be balanced every year. How it's balanced is determined by the board and the Budget Committee. And just so the record is straight, the board I was served on did not use road funds. And in fact, we attempted to use road funds to fund a deputy and that was rejected by the citizens. So, we never used road funds to balance the budget.
It was prior to the state stepping in.
This was as 2013. And we were, that was the last budget that I was involved in. And the SRS payments we received were very, very limited the last two years I was in office. The county lost over $12 million in revenue from about 1989 to 2009 and it continued to go down into what it is today, which is minimal.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I apologize to you, Mr. Christians, and I didn't mean to point at you like that.
I just get a little fired up sometimes.
He's a big boy.
Yeah, you gotta be careful.
So guys, I'm in the middle of the night last night. It's raining like it rained like I was a kid. And I'm wondering about these people over here and probably close to 200 people in Curry County that are homeless and where they're getting shelter. And believe me, it kept me up last night. I think of veterans that are out any minute, ready to do violence, as I slept soundly when I went back to sleep. And the reason I bring that up is because here's what we just signed, just a small portion of the Douglas County reopening plans, the Oregon State Chamber of Commerce. The forgotten people in this state have been our local businesses and their employees who have been crushed by their state government and left to fend for themselves. The impassioned presentation that you and Jay Tros gave the other day was absolutely remarkable. I've employed a few people in my day in the stress and pressure of putting a payroll together, after the insurance, after the fuel cost, after all the other expenses. And you figure out, guess what? I'm the last one that's going to get paid. That's what I do. And I'm dang lucky. You know what? The stress I was under never caused me to go medically ill. I just pulled it up, pulled the boots up and said, "Will you keep working for me? If you stay in, I'll do everything I can to keep you employed. Everything I can to keep you employed." First one on the job, last one to leave, yeah. Last one to get paid. I'm going to go back to the comments you made, Commissioner Rhodes, and that Jay Tros made. You're still trying to figure out a way to keep those people working and you're not getting any help. Everybody in this room that works for the county gets a payday every two weeks, clockwork, gets medical insurance. Thank the good Lord. My job is to figure out a way to keep that going and keep these county services going. And to politely, even lovingly, respectfully remind them, the people that don't have that paycheck every two weeks and don't know how they're going to make their mortgage. When you ran, decided to run, I know I give you a little nudge because I thought you'd be a great commissioner, I still do. Of the two meetings we've had so far, you voted with me about half the time. That's basically what I expected. But I'll tell you, I'm glad you're here. I promoted you to run and I was excited. Here it is, people. The last four years, the amount of money that's gone out of this county is unbelievable, unbelievable waste. Attorney fees, wasted amounts of money, some people too highly paid with too much authority and then telling everybody, "You're picking on those people. What in the world are you talking about?" I love those people that work here. I've fought to figure out a way and I will keep doing that and I think I'm going to get your help. I hope at some point I'll get your help.
You had my help until a certain time.
Please don't interrupt me now. I know the breakdown between you and I and I'm very deeply saddened about that. I want to bring back the focus to the people.
We can get her back.
Thank you. I want to bring the focus back to the people that don't have it or hurting out there that we've got to be aware of. And I think, I think we're trying. The District Four, AOC, five counties, Jackson, Josephine, Coos, Curry and Douglas, we're the smallest county. We're the only one that can afford a Director of Operations or a County Administrator. I have people in Douglas County, I see people shaking their heads, okay. I know these commissioners by heart, soul and mind, every one of them in those four counties. And they have good staff. And they have good staff. They do not have County Administrators, they do not have Director of Operations, they do not have people that isolate them from the departments. They have people that help them work with departments. And, as you heard George Rhodes say, as you heard Jim Cullen say, it worked great for years, but the stress, did it come from, when Tom Huxley, did he put that much stress on the employees here? I don't think so. Okay, if we're gonna have group noise in the back, disrespectful, what you're saying is, Mr. Barnes, is false. Is absolutely false. No, you're not gonna, you're not gonna talk-
You're doing a great job of changing the subject-
Recession, please.
But what this subject was-
Recession, please.
The employee's saying that working for you is making them ill, sir.
We're in recess.
Fine. But you, the employees are saying you're making-
That's my challenge to you. Are you up for it? I believe you are. And I heard the word deceitful. I don't even want to comment on that. That just takes us backwards. You know, people are testifying here today that they're unhappy and they are scared. Do what the old timers did. They hoped for the best, prayed for the best, and then prepared for the worst. And again, if the commissioners do their job, the pain's gonna be less. I'm absolutely convinced of that. I don't want to lose one employee here, but if I don't do my job, we're gonna lose a few. And I'm not, I'm not gonna allow that. If I, not without a fight. Thank you. Sheriff, would you, you're next, and I'm gonna go to Commissioner Pash.
I find myself not really wanting to be here to discuss any of this stuff. You know, you've said before, and I'll say it, you know, the sheriff's office, we're basically a standalone organization, even though we are part of the county. We do things different than the rest of the county does.
Thank goodness.
Well, the thing is, uh...
Go Department Two.
Well, I'm just gonna try to talk a little bit about my responsibilities. I'm the chief law enforcement officer of the county. My job is public safety. It should be the number one priority in anybody's mind. If you don't have public safety, you don't have nothing. You don't have insurance for your properties or anything. I was been contacted by a, and Court, you said several times, well, I don't see anybody showing up here that are unhappy or afraid for the job.
You mean in past meetings?
Yes.
Well, I've heard so much about people threatening to quit, but nobody's quit yet.
Well, I'm just saying, I didn't want to be here-
People waiting for their jobs. I hope they don't do that, but there's people waiting for their jobs.
Yeah, let me finish.
Thank you.
You're getting me off track here. A lot of people have come to me, you know, my, my employees don't have anything to do with this county. Nobody's afraid in my, my divisions about losing their jobs, other than if there's no money for the jobs, you know, or they screw up or whatever, and we have to deal with that. As an elected official, my people come to me and have, and if they have any issues. They don't have any issues with commissioners. But, like I say, I speak for the entire county with everybody. And that includes all the county employees. I don't know why, maybe they feel a little bit more comfortable talking to me, but I have had many county employees come to me and say, hey, I'm afraid to lose my job based on what's going on with commissioners. And, uh, you know what, especially in the last two or three months. And I said, well, I really can't control the commissioners, what commissioners do. But I'm telling you, there are people, and I'm not gonna name names, you're not gonna hear me say a name. And it isn't my wife. My wife can do what she does. She can fight her own battles. In fact, I don't try to get in an argument with her, because I always lose.
Good man.
And we talk about road funds, I, and Commissioner Rhodes was a commissioner. I think I was in diapers back then, so...
Oh, my goodness.
No, but seriously, there are people that have come to me and, and asking me for help. I really don't really like to come to commissioners and say, look, you got a problem here, you got a problem here. But I feel compelled that I need to speak up and say, yes, there are people in your employ that are concerned about losing their jobs and not like what's going on with the commissioners' office. The reorganization or whatever. Enough about that, but we're, we're gonna be talking about liaisons, okay? Back in when Huxley, everybody knew there was no love lost between Tom Huxley and I, because I stood up as an elected official for what was right. And, uh, it seemed like a lot of things were getting tore down during that era. And unfortunately, Court had to be part of that, you know, with Mr. Huxley, I believe, right? Were you part of that? Two years?
Yes.
Well, they get to a point where, um, he was, he assigned himself as my liaison. And I came to the board and I says, I'm not going to recognize anybody as a liaison, as an elected official. And I won't speak to other, about other elected officials, about their wants and desires for liaisons. But I don't need a liaison. And I express why, and I'm not gonna go over that again. I'm in charge of my own sheriff's office. I don't tell you guys how to do your jobs. But as a sheriff and elected official, I can come to any one of you guys at any time. I can come to Court. I've been to Court. I've been to Chris. And I'm gonna be coming to you too, but I'm not gonna recognize a single person as a liaison. Elected official doesn't need a, the board back then approved that and said the sheriff doesn't need a liaison. When Chris came on board as a commissioner, somehow that got overlooked. Nobody remembered that I was assigned a liaison, fine, you know. Doesn't keep me from going to each person if I wanted to, that I need to, that I have information. I feel comfortable with a certain person providing information. So, that's my take on as a liaison. Listen, I don't need one. If you guys assign me one, you know, I'm not gonna recognize it, because I'm still gonna use each one of you when the time comes. I will keep you informed. It's not like I don't want to come to you or anything like that, but I got a lot of things to do over there for this county. All I need you guys to do is support and find me some funding to keep my deputies. And then I let you guys do what you need to do. It's just the way it is.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Commissioner Pash?
I, I just wanna say what I wrote on here was that Assessor Cullen will speak after I speak. And not before. And I'm just, um... I don't know how I knew that. I just knew that. Uh, what I wanna say is, if, I don't know if you've ever had, Commissioner Boyce, Chair Boyce, I don't know if you've ever had someone come to you and make a complaint about me to you since I've been on this board. I don't know that you have. If you have, I've never been notified of it. And if I was notified of it, I would have tried to cure it. I have had many people come to me with complaints about you. And that's why we've talked about it in executive session. That's why we're talking, we've talked about it. Actually, you asked for it to be talked about in open session. I'm not gonna read off a list of names again. I will say, though, Ms. Schmelzer in her parting comments wanted me to make sure that everyone knew the reason she resigned from her job was because issues and disagreements that she had with the micromanagement by one commissioner. And that seems to be the biggest complaint, is how a lot of people are being, feel as though they're being micromanaged and being almost directed to do things when it's not in that person's purview to do it. I'm, um, I've seen it, and I am in, in agreement with it. And that's why I've consistently asked this board to stay in our lanes. And, um, my last comment on our Director of Operations are... I heard, I actually heard, uh... Mr. Rickert's wife, sorry, I forgot your first name. Sick senior moment, make a comment as she walked up to the bench a while ago when we went on recess. It was a different board. When it's a good board, it's easy to not have a lot of interaction with, with a, a, uh, you know, an administrator or a Director of Operations. When the board is functioning right and the departments are running right, and you've got a lot of funding, when you've gotta constantly be worried about budgets and cuts, it creates tension, it creates pressure. Uh, it creates disagreement on how money should be spent. But to your, to your comment that, you know, we didn't need a Director of Operations because the liaisons were so interactive, um, it was a different board. In my opinion, you didn't, if you would have had a group of people, and I wanna say over ten, come to you over time with concerns of one person constantly micromanaging them or complaining about that person and fear for their jobs, you might have looked at it differently and went, wow, do we need a conduit here? In this new law, uh, day and age of lawsuits and being sued, it's a great conduit, I think, for commissioners to have that extra person, that, that someone that hopefully they can relate to and the employee can relate to, to be that, that interaction between the two. And that's, that's basically my comments.
Do you have anything?
You know, and I, I hear you, Chris, but, and I also heard John Ward say, I run that sheriff's office, I, my people, I'm elected official, and my people come to me, and it seems to be working. Granted, he's got a pistol and a taser gun on his waist, but it works. It works there. And I just can't help but feel in my heart that it can work here if the three of us, the three amigos, can make it work. We, it starts with us. I, if we're, if we're the, the county commissioners, the head of the county, the three kings...
Ooh, ooh, careful on that one.
I'm a worker. I'm not a king.
I'm not...
I'm the lowest of these.
Well, we three kings of Oregon are, right? Anyway, not the kings, but we are elected officials to run this county. We, it's gotta start with the three of us being respectful to one another. Just being, just being real, saying, you know, if I gotta, we got to get along even when we can't. You know, we got, I said it yesterday or Monday, you gotta be able to get glad in the same pants you got mad in. Because it, it can be maddening when you hear different stuff. You hear Dave Barnes belt out from the audience about something you said fifty years ago or twenty-five years ago or last year. It, you, you can, you can get a little bit disgusted. But you just gotta say, hmm, that's, that's not, that's not what the county needs. That's not what our employees need to see. We need to get along. Sheree, right?
True. I'd like to say something.
We gotta be the example.
Director Rickert is next, please.
My turn?
Yes. Were you done? I'm sorry.
No, I just was ranting.
Okay.
I just wanna make a couple of comments about things that have been said and things that we've seen here. And to speak directly to some of your comments about, uh, these problems didn't happen before Director of Operations position was here. Since Monday, I've had numerous employees coming into, into my office saying these same things that we heard at the pulpit today. And that sheriff said, um, we're scared, scared for our jobs. We're, we're, we're in a toxic work environment, and they're, they're, they're upset about those things. But they're fearful to come in. And even with these comments that I'm, I'm saying now, and I, I worry about retaliation against myself with the comments my wife said, I worry about retaliation against myself. Commissioner Boyce, you've told me on several occasions that you will support me and want to set me up for success. Yesterday, you called me into your office and said these same words. And in the next breath, told me your plans of doing away with the Director of Operations position. Instead of giving me the tools to succeed, you're taking away the job that I'm hired for. And I question the logic in that decision, as this position has, has been mentioned earlier this meeting. Helps the board by carrying out the board decisions and policies and helps direct departments based on what the board policies are. Managing the board agenda. We, we even talked a little bit before we, we started this workshop about past agenda items and, and how that's done. That, that's something that, that I do is, is make sure all orders are signed and get to the departments and, and help remind them to get it back to us for recording after it's gone out to states, out, out to the state. So, all the paperwork that goes with that. It helps too. I've been working on, um, CDBG grants to help our veterans. Take those things away and, or take the Director of Operations away and, and then that goes away with it. Back to, back to these employees that are fearful. It may seem that they're conducting their business quietly. But I have had them tell me that they have either been told to stay out of it by their managers for one reason or another.
I didn't quite get that. I'm sorry. They'd either been told what now?
To stay out of the toxic work environment that we have over here. Or that because they're removed, they, they, they don't, they don't come under that as, as much. Couple more comments. Um, the the comments made on Monday about the Director of Operations position not being here, I took that, that I might not have a job. And then there, there was made mention that it's one hundred and twenty thousand a year, and that, that's wrong. There's, it's nowhere near that.
What is it then for, if I may ask, what is it then for base salary and employment cost? What is the total? It's costing the taxpayers?
Insurance, everything.
Benefits.
I don't know about the insurance part.
It's a hundred and twenty thousand minimum.
Including that, then I don't know.
Usually half of what you make.
I'm not saying you're not worth that. I'm just saying, here's, here's the budget figure right in front of us, okay? Go ahead.
That's all I have.
Who's next?
Ms. Ward.
Excuse, oh, yes.
Oh, Sheree, yeah, you said you...
Good afternoon, Commissioner Sheree Ward, Public Health Administrator, and welcome, Commissioner Herzog. This is, I will honestly say, this is a difficult place to be in, um, right now, to be standing here and listening to our board and our county employees and everybody in this disarray. It saddens me. It is the biggest hardship I have ever seen in our county so far, and we are dealing with a pandemic. And it, it, it's sad. I will reiterate, and I will tell you, and I am not going to name names either. Individuals do come to me. They come to me, I don't know why, probably because I'm welcoming, I don't know what it is. But they are afraid for their jobs. Me, though, I'm a fixer, and I try to give them guidance a little bit in regards to maybe talk to this, have you tried this, have you tried that? People are afraid. They're really afraid that they're, they're gonna lose their job. They have families to feed. They have young ones. They have that. They can't sleep. I get it. I can't sleep. My phone rings all the time right now. Long story short, the board has a very hard job to do. One of the things that I do see, and Commissioner Boyce and I have talked about this in the past, was I used to come to the Board of Commissioners meetings a lot there for a while. I stopped coming when I saw nobody getting along. I call it playground bullying. And it was sad. I don't like seeing that, because to be a board and do the right thing for our community and for our citizens in our community, we need to work together, and we need to be able to, to agree and disagree in a very professional manner. Professionalism has to happen, and where it needs to start is with the board. And then it starts with our employees. And how do we have to lead our, our employees? We have to lead our citizens, and we have to lead our county. And if we're not portraying and literally doing what we need to do to lead in a very professional manner and agree to disagree in a very professional manner, we will never gain the trust of our community in county government ever. And we have had a very difficult time in the last year with infrastructure of public health, with gaining employees, people who work twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. I'm telling you, it's, it's, it's a hardship to see what I see happening here. Nobody should be in fear of coming to work. I'm only in fear of coming to work that my phone's gonna ring while I'm trying to get ready for work. But where I'm going with this is you are a board. You're not one single commissioner. You're not one single commissioner, not one single commissioner. We need to be able to come to you as a board to make a decision and to help us with those decisions. Not, I'm going to fix this, and what are you going to do? And you need to do this, and you need to do that. No, the board needs to make that decision, and we need to be able to come to you and safely be able to come to the board and feel like that, oh, I upset somebody, or I blew up at somebody. We all blow up at each other, especially at this time period in our lives. The pandemic has wreaked havoc on our community, business owners, everybody. Where I'm going with this is, is my heart is saddened, but I'm hoping, and my biggest word used to be positive. I don't care to use that word right now. Positive is a bad thing right now for me and, and public health.
Negative is good, and positive is bad.
But not in the terms of, I would like to say optimistic. And I would like to say that I really, really am saddened for our employees who are feeling like they can't come in to work. And honestly, I'm saddened for the board. I want, I would love to see, as a citizen, as your Public Health Administrator, I would love to see a united front with our board. And I hope to goodness we can get there much sooner than later, because that's what the county deserves, that's what our citizens deserve, and most of all, that's what our employees deserve.
Amen.
Who's next? Thank you, Ms., Ms. Ward. Come on up, Richard.
He's immune to all germs. Look at him.
Got three young boys. Like Sheriff Ward, I've received many calls these last few weeks from staff, and it breaks my heart. It really does. And so, uh, I think the chain of command's totally broken. I think there's no, zero trust with the board and, uh, and staff. And that, that has to be repaired. Until that's done, I wouldn't be making any changes. All these changes that you're just throwing out there right now without any trust of the staff, is just scaring everybody to death. And they're calling me, and I'm just going like, I can't help you. You know, hearing you, I don't know what to say. You know, you can't, I can't fix the board, and...
Rich, is this your staff calling you?
No, this is staff here at the Annex. No, as far as I know, everything's running smooth in the Road Department. You know, I have a clear chain of command, how people address things from all the way to me, how it goes past me. Everybody knows how that structure works. It's the same thing in the Sheriff's Department. They have a structure. And we, and so, right now, all those tools are gone in, in this building. And so, the thing is, I've always been in city government, where we've had a city manager, someone that's professional, that could work between the council and staff and, and, and direct staff. And, and so, I, I really believe in having an operations manager. I'm from that background. I think having that little bit of separation. But until you guys get your stuff together and develop trust and have this chain of command, I highly recommend you don't change nothing. You quit changing things, slow down, and let Mr. Rickert do his job and what you hired him for. And, uh, that's a structure that's always worked in my city life that I've worked for the past thirty-five years I've worked. And I've never been in such a dysfunctional system as I have walked into here to county. And it's, uh, it's been like that since I've come here. It's only gotten worse. And so, uh, I'm saying, slow down. Get your, you guys get together, and it takes strong leadership, and it takes trust. If you don't have trust in your team, you don't have trust in the public, you got nothing. So, we need you to get it together, to help us get trust, and then make change. Thank you.
Mr. Christiansen, if you don't mind, stay up there for a second. So, the sheriff has testified, or excuse me, give a public comment. Health Administrator Ward has testified. Commissioner Pash has testified. Uh, Mr. Rickert has testified. You have testified. Who am I forgetting? That there's no movement forward. I hear you say, don't do any change, okay? I don't think those calls come into any of the people I just mentioned. They're coming from the Sheriff's Department, the Juvenile Department, the Assessor's Office, the Clerk's Office. Uh, it's basically just in this building. And those are people, when they're talking to all of you, I assume they're the same. You don't wanna name names, of course, I understand. When they're doing that, they're not working. And I think that is where the public comes in and goes, my goodness. Do they really have it that rough? And are you leading them out of it? Well, I'm isolated from those people. I don't have any interaction with the employees. So, to hear Commissioner Pash continually say, ten people, you're getting to quit. I want the citizens to know that is, that is felonious. Now, I've had some issues with too, that because of the former Director of Operations, I lost unbelievable opportunities to work with them and build relationships. I was kicked to the curb, lied about, and then the next thing you know, gotta have different commissioner liaisons. And so, my absolute determination and vision to move this county forward with changes that have to happen so that we don't lose the jobs, so that we provide the best services, so that we close that gap between the haves and the haves not, the public out there that is hurting so badly, and those of us that are getting a paycheck every two weeks in full medical and all the rest of it. We can't stay where we are and pretend like we're gonna overcome some of these things. I agree that there's sometimes changes that happen too fast, okay?
Well, just my perspective, I've been around a while, been in public works, like I say, thirty-five years. And I was highly trained by city assignment. Well, thank God for all the training I've received to give me the tools to be able to lead a team. And so, uh, and that's where it kinda comes in, where I'm used to talk, having like a city manager. Someone that's professionally trained, between elected officials that aren't professionally trained, their popularity by the public, they run on a message, and they take that and the city manager takes all that and put, makes it, and work into a, a function that directs us to complete those tasks. And so, that layer, uh, that's professionally led, I think, is, uh, real important. And it, it has nothing to say that, uh, commissioners, uh, aren't doing a good job or anything like that. But what I'm really trying to say is, is, is trust, okay? If there's no trust, you can't do your job, you know? You can't sleep at night. I talk with my team, we have a monthly safety tailgating meeting, so I tell them how blessed we are to have a job in these times. Last year was so stressful. It's taken everything I could do to keep my team together. You know, everybody is falling apart around us. And to create more stress in such a stressful environment is, I'm, you know, people are gonna snap. And so, it takes us as leaders to build trust, to build strength, to build security so we can function as a team and we could achieve our goals and be productive, okay? If you can't get that, you can't get production, you can't... You have to have strong leadership. You need to have a strong chain of command. You have to have security. And so, right now, things are crazy. Things are totally unsecure. And just to say, okay, we're gonna change everything right now, and everybody...
We're changing everything. I don't, I don't understand.
You know, well, that's what is being said to me, and that's what appears, you know, we're looking at...
Those, those things that are said out there are just rampant.
Well, we're talking about changing...
Lead us out of that and not listen to, to that if it's not valid.
Well, I don't know. You know, I mean, I, I really try not to come up here. I'm up here only to take care of Road Department business. But, you know, uh, I just felt I needed to be here today and talk and, and, and let you know what's going on. And so, we need to fix it. You know, maybe it takes outside help. I don't know. But, uh, right now, things are broken and the wheels are off. And we need to get the wheels back underneath us. We need to have trust.
What is, can you be specific for me, not, not to, you know, to pigeonhole you, but just, what is broken? Because people are unhappy? Or is there something else that's not functioning right?
It's trust.
Okay, but I...
It's just basic trust.
It's too broad for me, uh, you know?
Well, the thing is, if you feel that, uh, your job's in jeopardy, there's no trust.
Do you trust the board?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a great working relationship with the board, but I have a big toolbox. I'm trained. Okay, you're talking about a lot...
Roadmaster Christensen, if I may, I'm just going to take a little offense to no management experience, no skill sets, not properly or professionally trained. That's what the former Director of Operations said to me, and that was a breakdown between me and one very important, very important to me, department head, that I lost the opportunity to work with. And...
Well, see, and that's like a threat. You know what I mean? So, what I think is, is that people don't, and I don't take it that way. Okay? But there's people that could.
Okay.
Okay? You know what I'm saying? And they don't have the toolbox that I have. And I have big shoulders and I let that stuff go by me. It goes right by me. I don't even think about it. You know, I don't even spend any effort thinking about that. But other people don't have that toolbox and it goes right into their heart. Okay? And that's what we're dealing with right here. So, the thing is, is that you got to build public trust. You got to build trust with our staff, your staff, and we all have to work together, team. We're all one. We're the county. You know, the sheriff, the road, you know, emergency services, public health, all of us. We're one team. And right now, it's broken and we got to get it put back together. So, I mean, I would just slow down. I would start working on building trust with the team, try to start over. You know, John's talking about starting over. Hey, let's get a clean slate or whatever. You know, I don't know what the answer is, but I think it, you got to be able to communicate honestly without feeling like you're going to be retaliated against. And right now, that does not exist. Okay? I'm just letting you know.
Really appreciate you showing up today. Commissioner Pash?
Well, you mentioned that a lot of the complaints are from this building. And you also mentioned that I said you wanted to fire 10 people, which I didn't say that...
No, no. If I, let me clarify. If that's the way it came out, that's not what I meant. You said you had 10 people specifically. Thank you.
Well, there was a list and to show that...
Yeah, and you went over that list.
The building. I mean, Tom Huxley, which I didn't agree with either, so I'm, I was in agreement with you on that. Clark Schroeder, the way he, you know, as an administrator, I didn't agree with, but you had personal issues with him.
No, no personal issues, sir.
Well, the way he did his job is what I mean. Sue Gold, I mean, when I came aboard, personally, I didn't get along with Sue Gold. I mean, I had a preconceived notion about her, that I learned to work with her as a commissioner. To make this board whole, I learned to work with her. And we worked, I thought we worked well together as a board. And for whatever reason, at that point, I felt like our Commissioner Boyce and my relationship started to deteriorate. And, you know, and then when things, again, you're saying that people, you feel like a lot of this isn't justified. Commissioner Gold, you put notes on everyone's doors on what a horrible job she did as a commissioner. You taped them to our doors, a list of things of how horrible she was. Dave Fortman, who's code enforcement, he's not in this building, really. I mean, he's got an office downstairs. I've never seen him in this.
Why don't you let him speak for himself?
I'm just saying, you've had a disagreement with him, so he could come here and say it. Jeremy Duhemire, you had a disagreement with him so bad, I believe the sheriff had to...
So, am I automatically guilty as charged?
I'm just saying, you're saying...
That's your assumption.
These are things. Josh Hopkins, you had an issue with, and now currently, it's Anthony DeRocque. Chet Brewer, our maintenance guy here.
Well, that's a new one to me.
Julie Schmelzer, from what I understand, well, not from what I understand, what she told me personally, she left here. And there are four or five other people in this building that have asked me not to mention their names that have a problem. And I, you know, when you said to the treasurer, and I know you probably didn't mean anything by it, but you said to the treasurer, she wasn't qualified when she took her office. I mean, when you say to Ms. Ward, I'll give you the benefit of the doubt on your job performance, these are things that you say off the cuff, but it's, it's how it's perceived by people over and over and over. And now, Mr. Rickert telling him in several different meetings with him, either in public or in private, that you may not have a Director of Operations position, which as he just testified to, says, I may not have a job tomorrow, wife, my kids. I'm sorry. We may have to move again because I was just told today I don't have a job. I may not have a job tomorrow. I just wondering why performance in the county is down, wondering why motivation is down, wondering why that old skip in your step. I used to love to come here every morning and sit in my office and say, let's get busy. And now, it's, I sit in my office and either my phone rings or somebody knocks on my door, or I hear about something and it's just depressing. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
I'm going to, I'm going to respond and then I'm going to get right to you. So, the information I left on Commissioner Gold's door was very articulate and specifically to the record of the amount of money that this county lost. It's easy to verify and it can't be retrieved. That money will never come back. And here we are, wondering if we're going to lose employees as we fight through this pandemic. That money, where are we going to, how are we going to replace it? That's my job. I'm going to figure a way. I'm going to figure a way. I want to look at the citizens in the camera and let you know that there's somewhat of an attempt here, and it's gone on for all four years through lawsuits and censors and all that. Ethics violations beat it all soundly. I'm fighting for your interest. And your interest are to absolutely hold this county together and move forward. We can't move forward if we don't make changes. We can't move forward if we don't analyze everything we do, every aspect, every expense. And so, if that change makes people want to quit, leave angry, call up every other department heads, I'm feared for my job, I can't sleep at night. I can tell you lots of people that aren't sleeping right now. But I can tell you one more time, that I'm here every day, six or seven days a week, because that's what I signed up for and that's what I have to do. The other commissioners haven't been here more than two or three days a week, once in a while, four. I need them here every single day with every department, with every employee, with, not micromanaging, managing period and overcoming these problems. You've had some very good public comment today. But whatever the problems are, aren't from Boyce. And the facts will prove that out. And I'm just going to offer one thing. Commissioner Pash, you just said again that I challenged Administrator Ward. Totally false on her job performance. I handed you the email. Would you please review it? Because it's not truthful what you're saying.
Mr. Chair.
So, Council Huddle, you're up next. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I want to echo some of the comments that Rich Christensen made. I think Rich and I share a similar background in that we came from a long-term employment at a municipal government at a city. And both of our cities had a city administrator and, you know, city council form of government. And that's a different form of government than a board of commissioners in a general law county. And so, there were some changes for me when I came to the county from the city background. And when you do have a city council, city administrator, plus, again, long-term government employment as well, I think that's part of the toolbox that he's talking about. I think I've heard the whispers and whatnot of people and their fears. Some of those I don't think are experienced government employees. I think some of them are inexperienced government employees. One thing about working for a county government, the statutes say that the Board of Commissioners is responsible for all matters of county concern, and it takes two out of three commissioners to make a decision for the county. I heard, one thing I want to differ on Rich about, he said, we need to, you know, leave Brad in place to do the job you hired him for. Technically, Court Boyce abstained on the vote to hire Brad, and John Herzog was not here. And you've heard, they have different philosophies about running a county government. One part about working for a government has changed. You have to be flexible. When I worked at the city, the incoming city council wanted me to present to them their options for legal services. And so, I, they tasked me with telling them, you know, what their options were. And I had to go in front of them and present, your option is to have an in-house legal counsel. You can hire an outside law firm, or you can do an intergovernmental agreement. And I gave them their three options. And I said, these people do this. It costs, you know, I mean, that's, that comes with the territory. I also understand on good authority that there were people here who have been elected who were considering replacement of me. I kept my mouth shut and did my job. I'm not saying that people do not have a right to speak up. They do. We had several employees come here and speak up today. I didn't see any anger or animosity towards those speakers from the commission. But really, I think you have to be flexible when you're a government employee. When there's a new administration come in, you have to anticipate change. And you have to prepare yourself mentally and emotionally for those changes. And really, that's part of being a government employee. We are at-will employees. We serve at the will of the Board of Commissioners. And so, like I said, and if there's going to be an organizational change, that's at the will of the Board of Commissioners. So, really, those are some just very basic concepts of being a government employee and what the Board of Commissioners can and can't do. I've also seen employees disrespectfully address commissioners, both in the hallways and in these chambers. So, you know, and because the Director of Operations was a go-between, there was very low consequence to them of some disrespectful conduct. In fact, I think some commissioners complained about that and the Director of Operations counseled those employees or did whatever personnel action was allowed under her purview. So, again, there's just different ways to run a county. The way we've done it for the last two or three years, when I came here, we did not have a county administrator. And we didn't have one until, I think, so, when I first got here, I think it was Susan Brown, David Brock Smith, and Tom Huxley. Tom Huxley was one of the people, I understand, who ran on the, well, first, he was one of the people who wanted the charter. And the charter established a county administrator position. And as John Herzog said, that was voted down a couple of times. But when Huxley got here, he took a stipend. And his platform was still to have a county administrator. Gold came in, also took a stipend, and they used that savings to pay the county administrator position. And then, and then something, and then Court Boyce and Chris Pash came in and terminated, that, there was a parting of the ways between the county, and it was not a termination, there was a parting of the ways between that county administrator and the county. And then Julie Schmelzer was hired and we created the job of Director of Operations. Again, two out of the three commissioners made that decision. It was not unanimous, but it was two out of three commissioners. And as a county council, I shepherded the two out of three commissioners through that process. And again, it's organizational, it's how the statutes read of how the county runs itself. And again, the, I have seen the past two years as well, I've seen the past five years, and none of it's been really smooth. I think that is almost a little bit of loser-y. I came in to the county when there was the biggest lawsuit against the county in county history. An employee was going to sue the county, employee was suing the county for $5 million because of the way the commissioners treated him. That case was dismissed and the county paid zero to that employee. So, there's just, there's a lot of, and there was so much hype. And there were people applauding against the board and county employees, they were applauding against the board in this chamber. And the board just basically took it and just handled their business and things resolved the way they did. So, I just want to, you know, I guess I'm speaking mainly to Commissioner Herzog and let you know that you're entitled to follow your conscience and you have one vote of three people who are in charge of running this county. And that's really it. But if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. But really, I think the toolbox Rich and I are talking about is years and years of public employment. I have been yelled at by people in these seats myself. I've had people tell false statements about me from these seats. I basically try to correct the record and move on because it comes with the territory. But also, again, there's not a lot of certainty. We're seeing a change at the federal level, at the state levels. We have new people come in and things happen. So, it's, the government employment is a particular type of employment. And I think that's one of the biggest toolboxes a government worker can have, is knowledge that, you know, the flexibility is one of the, one of the tools in your toolbox. You know, you mentioned we've had five changes of, we had John Hitt, I was interim, Clark Schroeder...
Oh, yeah, you make five.
Julie Schmelzer. Yeah, again. So, there's, I didn't have any authority other than to put the agenda together. But anyway, there's just, I've been here five years constantly changing, constantly changing. Just, that's really, you know, really what, what my, the tool, in my toolbox that I use the most is trying to be as flexible as possible. So, that's really all I have.
Thank you very much. When we were sworn in yesterday, you know, I looked at Judge Margolis and I thought, wow, he's been here 20 years. I mentioned the sheriff earlier this morning, standing, taking pictures of the time he has spent here. Both the assessor and the clerk were sworn in, got to see you. And I mentioned David Brock Smith the other day in regards to Council Huddle. I've also, and his support, this guy could work for almost any county, big or small, in Oregon. And I really believe that. And I've also said he's had to knock me upside the head a few times, and he has, and I had it coming. And where I'm, what I'm asking the people, what I'm asking the employees, I've been here four years. Mr. Pash has been here two years. You've been here...
Three days.
I know my heart is right. It's not about leading, but it is about serving. And it's both. I'm asking for time to pull this together in the middle of a pandemic, in the middle of the winter season, in the middle of reduced tourism, in the middle of reduced revenue, in the middle of tremendous diverse personalities. Am I capable? I don't know. You're going to have to decide. But my heart's in it and I'll be here. You heard Council Huddle say, employees plotting. Okay? That's going on here. That's going on here. Am I completely innocent? If I handle everything perfectly? Heavens, no. But I'm here every day again. And my heart is to reach out to them and it has. So, to be accused of micromanaging or disrespecting people, ain't so. Commissioner Pash, at one time earlier today, you asked, if somebody came to me and said, I can't work with Commissioner Pash, what would I do? I would immediately called in executive session and I would have dug and dug and dug and dug for the facts to give you the benefit of doubt that you're probably innocent. And that's how this board can work together. Case in point, two elected officials, box office people, went into their offices, into their offices, and asked to find employees that work for them to run against them. And those two elected officials, might have been three, but those two elected officials came to you and asked if you would help and would you review? And you basically said, I don't care. So, if we continue with that kind of activity, that kind of breakdown, that kind of subversion...
Could you elaborate on that? I don't know what you meant by...
Please, no. Please, no.
Okay. I don't know what he said, what he just said, though.
Well, it wasn't good.
Well, it just, he just accused me of something. I think it should be...
I think it's going to come out in the light, so you'll get your answer. Okay?
So...
I'm going to give you the, go ahead.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, my mom, before she passed away, always said, there's no excuse for bad manners.
Is it bad manners?
It's bad manners to bring up the past. It's over. We've just heard from all these employees and stuff. Let's move on. Let's...
Okay, that was from a Director of Operations. Okay?
Yeah, that was, that's ancient history, of course.
Here's, no, it's not.
Yeah, it is.
No, it's not. It's still not resolved, and it should have been resolved right then. And we'd be together if it had have been handled and managed properly.
I think it's...
So, Mr. Rickert, I, I'm asking you to roll up your sleeves and go into that finance office and work with your staff and overcome some tremendous odds. And yes, I'm looking for an office manager that will work two or three days a week that you can also work with, we can also, we can all work with. That's my long-term vision. I don't know how any human being could possibly do what we're asking of you. I'm not asking of you, but the board, the previous board is, that you do both the hand-holding of the employees that are so scared, and you, you run all the departments, that you, the finances need your immediate attention and nonstop until we can get things ironed out. Do you not agree? Okay, I'm putting you on the spot. That's not, that was not my intent. Okay? But I do want to give you a... But I do wanna give you a chance to respond. So, this system hasn't worked for four years, okay? And we put you in a tough, tough position. I don't care how talented you are. I don't know who in the world could possibly do it. And the emphasis, the focus has got to be on finances. We don't know where we are. We've gotta do a new budget committee. You've got a new treasurer coming on, all the above. I need you to stand tall. We need you to stand tall in there. And, you know, it's gonna take several months. And when I ask you where we are, what you've inherited, again, no fault of yours, is we gotta start anew. We gotta, we gotta get a new plan going. We gotta, again, move forward. You're a key part of that, but it doesn't need to be as a Director of Operations. It doesn't even make sense to me now. And it has proved to be incredibly counterproductive and ineffective. So, I wanted you as a finance director and that's what you're really good at. And I told you the other morning, I think you could grow in beyond that and be a long-term part of this county. And you know I was sincere when I said that and believe that. And asked for your, I'd said, "I know you don't trust me now." Back to Mr. Christiansen, I said, "But over time, I think you will, if you give me a chance."
So, this is just a workshop?
Okay, but I'm saying, I want everybody to know what I think has to happen to save this county.
There's no decisions get made in a workshop?
I know. I didn't ask him. I just, I did ask him, would you, would you consider? That is not your number-one priority. And I'd be, okay, that's all I got.
Are there other items on the workshop?
I think we're out of time. It is 4:35. So, but good, a good day, good productive day.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
So, we're gonna forego the last item on the.
What was it, Chris?
It was the NeoGov, OpenGov software. So, we're gonna forego that for today.
Yeah.
Do you wanna continue that item?
We could, we could spend 10 minutes on that, couldn't we?
I think it's more than a 10-minute item, but.
Yeah.
I.
We need to grind, we need to grind out some. I've seen Sina standing out there off and on for the last two hours. So, evidently, she's left now, so I guess she's gone. You wanna continue or you wanna adjourn and?
You know, I'm game to go at least 20 minutes and talk NeoGov and OpenGov. I think that would be some productive time, at least, what's the risk? What do we got to lose? It's a major issue.
He won't run it.
Yeah, he won't, he's running.
And then some.
I didn't know check and move that quick.
So, that was Mrs. Crook? Was standing out there forever?
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe that's more important. I don't know which is more important. I can stay till six. That didn't bother me.
Yeah. John, what's your schedule tomorrow?
By the way, Commissioner Pash, one of, one of the biggest issues of doom and gloom has been NeoGov. You mentioned that there's, you know, you used to enjoy coming here and then there was doom and gloom. NeoGov has been a source of some of that, some of it.
NeoGov or OpenGov?
Thank you, OpenGov. I don't know about NeoGov yet.
What is NeoGov?
NeoGov's a job.
I'll explain. It's real simple.
I think I might run it.
We, five-minute break, guys. No worries.
That we're dealing with. So, uh, who's next? You, Mr. Commissioner Pash?
I, I just raised my hand, so maybe I am. Um, I don't think OpenGov is, or NeoGov is paid for out of the general fund. I believe it is paid for with other funds and I don't, I'm not sure what funds it's paid from, but I do not believe it's paid from a general fund. The other thing is, um, there is, as you know, we live on the Oregon coast and it is extremely hard to find qualified individuals. We have tried on many, many occasions to find people, um, from what I've heard over the years that we sometimes get no applications for. Um, or if we do get applications, they're from people that we, the county settles on versus headhunts. Uh, I'm from the mindset of head, headhunting the best. So, to have something that I, I'm not certain that it's, and again, I might be misspeaking on this. I don't believe it's paid for with general fund money, so it doesn't come out of the general fund. But even if it does, I believe it's thirty thousand a year. Am I correct?
I believe so, yeah.
So you're looking at, for the amount of money that we get, we're gonna have to, Council Huddle's getting ready to retire. I don't know if we want to settle for a, a, a local lawyer, and I'm not saying that whoever applies locally is not qualified, but wouldn't it be great for the, for the county to put it out to, to everyone to be able to pick from the best, not settle for one because we can't find another? There are other positions that, some of our positions here are getting senior in the county that we're going to need to be replacing. Wouldn't you rather be able to replace with someone that is very qualified for that position as opposed to hiring somebody that's got the degrees, but you still have to train them up to that job? So, how many times have we wasted money, as Commissioner Boyce has stated, on how many, uh...
You should research that.
Directors, pardon?
You should research that.
Just making a comment, I'm not, I'm just making a comment. How many times have we wasted money to fill different positions that it didn't work out? Charlene Harvey, uh, lady didn't work out. How, you know, diff-
That's personal, okay. Goodness sakes. You talk-
What?
I'm just surprised you named a name for goodness sakes.
It's just, please move on. If we could.
We, we have hi, we have hired people over the years that didn't work out for one reason or another. I'm not saying she wasn't a bad person, all I'm saying is it didn't work out. So, there are, NeoGov is, is a perfect tool to find the most qualified. It goes out nationwide. It is, um, headhunters look on NeoGov usually, and I don't know this for sure, but I have been told from NeoGov that if a county normally looks for an employee, that, um, they might get one or two applications from within a two or three hundred mile radius. NeoGov, you'll have fifteen applicants from wherever, so you'll get much more.
Can I go to Director Rick now?
I didn't know I was limited in my comments, but go ahead, yes.
Yeah, it's, uh, we got fourteen minutes.
Thank you, sir.
I was just gonna verify that it was not paid out of the general fund. It was paid with COVID reimbursement.
Okay.
It done cost us a dime.
If it come out of COVID money, then it was money that would have been for actual COVID-related expenses. So we just lost money there, in my view. This is a classic example, spending five dollars to save a nickel. That's where we are here. Why, how do we even justify, I'm gonna say it again, bec, and I hate repeating, but it's gotta be said, we're not looking for new employees right now. I mean, we're gonna have a lot of laid off people outside the county, in this county, that we hopefully start with the treasure, that we can, uh, encourage to come to work for Curry County and bust everything we, every effort we can to make sure we create the best possible salary package that we can. Um, so, you know, my questions are, what is the schedule regarding NeoGov deliverables? When do the payments due? How much have we paid to date? God, I'm just processing that, come out of COVID money, what a waste.
Until next year. It's paid up till next year.
So it's already prepaid for a year, so we'll try it for a year, and we can't cancel it. It's prepaid for a year, so let's try it and, and-
And I couldn't put ten thousand, gentlemen, in an investment to go out and get maybe a, a million or two in grants, to put that investment out there, and we're gonna invest on this, say, oh, if we lose in a year, oh my goodness.
Sounds like we already did.
We already paid money, I don't know, that's the question that I got-
That's what I just said, it's already paid for a year.
See, we're gonna dump some more in Mr. Rickards', Director Rickards', uh, desk. Hey, figure this one out, w, well, by the way, we have serious payroll issues of people that, uh, have been waiting for two years to have their checks, excuse me, a year and a half, to get their checks lined out, so we dump that on his desk. Then we go, by the way, we're gonna put this on your desk, and oh, by the way, you know, I mean, I'm just, I'm, sorry, guys, I'm just really flabbergasted, so yes, I put this on the agenda, I voted against it, I wish we could stop it until there's a truly, a, a fierce analysis on how and when we can afford it, and then let's go to OpenGov now. Let's go to OpenGov.
Okay.
My goodness, I mean, it's the latest, greatest flashy thing, and we saw today where it's not gonna be ready till April? And, I mean, it's creating stress for our people, it's creating, uh, backlog for our people, it's creating late meetings for us, and I think there, I know, according to our people, that we could have done a different route, and we have bowled forward with this. I voted against it also, and I just, I, I wish I could have somehow, at the very least, delayed this. And now we're gonna also dump on Director Rickards' desk, uh, you figure this out, uh, and let us know how it's going, and it's too much, it's too much, it's gonna short, it would short circuit anybody. So who's next?
Chris?
All right, go ahead, Mr. Rickard.
Um, I could be wrong, I thought I saw an order where you signed for it, but regardless, um... OpenGov, as, as was stated earlier, went, went live today, or Monday. Um, there are bits and pieces that are coming on live over the next six months, payroll being, coming on live, uh, coming live in, uh, April. Um, it's not uncommon to, to do a, I don't know, dispersed, um, go live when, when you're, when you're dealing with ERP systems. Um, I've, I've been through it before with other companies I've worked with. That, that's how it's gone, um, comes on live to some departments, places, kind, kind of piecemeal. Um, yeah, the OpenGov has, has taken a lot of time. Um, it, it, it has been, at times, extremely hard to, to do, to, for, for all the work that's, and that's going into it. But just because something's hard doesn't mean you don't do it. We have, as you mentioned, payroll issues. Sitting through the, the training sessions, seeing the setup on payroll, it is going to fix ninety percent of our issues. It's gonna fix, it's gonna take away the majority of manual calculations that we have to do where the mistakes are being made currently, um, which will reduce the liability of the county in the future. Those other, that other ten percent, we'll be able to focus on and, and set up the controls. I'm not worried about that. Open, Casell, um, payroll program is, is not what the county needs. It, it's not, um-
Director Rickard, even in a, even in a short-term basis?
No, no, we're on Casell right now, and it's not working. The mistakes continue happening, um, because there are so many manual- Maybe not, but that's the wrong question to ask.
What I'm hearing is that if we would have updated the system, good chances were, are we would have had these, these unfortunate mistakes.
We, with payroll, we have so many different variables. We have sheriff's office that, some of them work four-ten, the others work different hours. Um, we have pay differentials, we have, um, on-call pay and, and call-out pay. I, I don't, I don't know all the terms, but we have so many different variables that this, our payroll is a very complex payroll. Casell cannot handle it, even with the upgrades. As we've been going through OpenGov, I, I have seen the tables, and, and Julie Swift is, is amazingly knowledgeable with, with all the intricacies, and she has been working hard with, with, uh, OpenGov to get everything into those tables so that when we run payroll and we're gonna start testing it, um, this month, um, I think as early as next week, all those things are in there. We don't have to do all those manual calculations. Ninety percent of them are going to be gone, and, and that, that's just the payroll portion of it.
Okay, okay.
It is very essential to keep. Um, you, you talk about, you know, me succeeding.
The what?
You, you've talked about giving me the tools to succeed. This is a tool that will allow the county to succeed, to allow us to stop making mistakes that shouldn't be made, and to, back to your question about is that Casell's fault? Um, well, I, I think I answered that adequately. They don't have the capability, um, to enter all these different payroll variables in that OpenGov does. OpenGov's payroll system is, is top-notch, in my opinion.
So Commissioner Herzog, for your benefit, and I, I wanna come back to you if you have more you wanna add there. Uh, I would love to hear from, uh, Clerk Crook. Um, we don't know what this is costing, but some of the estimates have been a hundred thousand a year, so you can do the math in a five-year period, it's a half a million dollars, and is it worth it? That's the question, and that's been the debate, although it hasn't been a very thorough debate, unfortunately. Um, so, Sina Crook, would you mind?
I've had my hand up, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, but I'm gonna, I wanna go to her before she has to go home, she's, if you want to. I'd like to hear that, your, your take on-
You don't want to.
On Casell versus OpenGov, your, your analysis, evaluation of where we are right now, and, uh, I know you've had to work some legitimate overtime, even on weekends, to try and, try and get it done.
Okay, I'm Sina Crook, Assistant Finance Director.
Pull that other microphone down, that's a little better, thank you.
So yes, this, this has taken a lot longer than we were promised. Um, a lot more time involved, um, I think they're learning as we're learning. Uh, we've had multiple different teams and changes and directions. Um, and, um... To be upfront with you, Commissioner Boyce, um, I spoke with you a year ago about this, and you were all for it.
All for OpenGov?
For OpenGov, you were saying, but, but Sina, it'll make your job so much easier, is that it'll help everything, I mean... I, I believe it was the two of you that voted for it and Sue Gold against it, but I just feel that this conversation is a year too late. Um, we're going live, um, I, I think it will work, I really do. Um, it costs a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the first year for implementation. It'll be about forty-six thousand a year to sustain it. Um, and they said they would, I think the contract says only a four percent increase each year. And, um, they'll support it, um, I don't know if it'll be as well as Casell, but, um... Casell could have done a lot of this, we could have been up and running. Casell wouldn't have given you all the bells and whistles of the charts and, um, the graphs that everybody was happy to see. But what is gonna happen is that the departments are going to be entering their own information. They'll enter their time sheets, um, the departments, instead of filling out those claim forms that you guys review all the time, they'll be entering the information, but instead it's going to be internally and everything will be electronic, so we'll eventually get away from paper files. Um, there, there are things that, that I can see possibly, but it's gonna take a while to get there.
Mrs. Crook, um, when you came into my office, um, I would not challenge your memory versus mine because I'm sure yours is better, but I remember talking to you and, um, Director, uh, Swift, different times, within that sixty-day period, when I changed my mind, when I saw the, the tremendous expense. Um, basically I had to beg for forgiveness, everyone, because I voted for it. Um, at that time, you were, you were really pleading, and it made sense, if I recall correctly, that Casell can be updated, and I said, "I'll try, but I think I'm too late", and I, and I, I brought that up in a meeting, and I was pretty persistent and determined, and I think reasonably well-spoken, and, um, and I failed, I couldn't, you know, and so here we are. It is good to hear you say, uh, and, and that you know the figures, that's very helpful, and I'm embarrassed that I didn't know the figures, or didn't email you before now, but what I'm, what I'm sensing though, and maybe there's a little bit of relief here, is a hundred and thirty-six plus, we'll say fifty thousand a year, um, yeah, I, that's, that's a lot less than five hundred thousand in five years. So, thank you. Uh, do we know, real quick question, do we know of any other counties in Oregon that have this system?
Oh, I don't, we did check that at one time, in fact, I think you checked.
I can't remember.
And Clamath County, I think, has the overlay, they have a separate accounting program, but they have the overlay that has the charts and graphs. And they said it, it took a while to get it going, but then it seemed to be working well.
Thank you very much. Do you have anything else?
No.
Okay, Mr. Pash?
Uh, Sina, I just wanna ask you, um, you, you said that, you know, a lot of the departments are gonna be able to do their own time sheets now, their own, uh, their own, um, you know, their billings, basically, to you, it'll be more automated. Um, how many hours a week do you think that will save the finance office from having to hand-enter all that information into computers?
I don't know really that it'll save a whole lot, because we can do it pretty quickly.
Right, would you say four or five hours a week?
That is different, um, we still have to review.
Right.
So they'll do the entry, and, and then, um, we were told that it would be electronic, and they, they would just send it over to us. We find that's not exactly the way it's gonna be, but it'll be a version of electronic. And so that will be scanned over, and then it'll still have to go through one or two review channels um, to pass the audit test. So, um, it could, it could free up maybe three, four hours?
A week, per person, or just you?
For a person.
For a person.
It will, it will then allow us to do the actual review that we need to do. Um, I, I can't even run the financial reports, because I'm busy working on trying to get it ready.
And that's, that's my question to you, is that would all, that would free up your time to look for other issues?
Exactly, and catch, catch problems.
And corrections to stop making issues.
Catch the problems before they-
And the three hours a week that that would also save, um, if you added up over a period of a year, yes, this is forty-six thousand, I think, the first year, forty-eight, forty-seven, seven, and then forty-nine, but the other comment I wanted to make on this is, this board, this past year, Budget Committee and then the Board approved a new software program for our assessor's office. Software programs, sometimes we need to change, we need to update. Uh, Windows started out as Windows One or whatever it was, and now it's Windows Twelve, I think.
Ten, I think.
And it's for a reason, um, you know, Apple went to different platforms for a reason. You have to update and upgrade to catch up with the services that are offered. Um, I'm sure our assessor's office came to the Board and, uh, the Budget Committee and the Board to ask for, it was in excess of a hundred thousand, wasn't it, two hundred thousand?
I think it was something like a hundred and seventy.
Okay, so a hundred and seventy, plus you also have an annual fee that you have to pay. Um, you came to, uh, to this Board for that exact same reason, you needed to upgrade your software, and it was going to better your office, correct?
That's correct.
So it, I mean, it's, it's time that this Board does this, and, and again, I, I would think that, um, the hours that will be saved once it's up and running and everyone is comfortable to run it, it will pay for itself. Mr. Rickard has his hand up.
Oh, yeah, Brad.
Let's go you here, and then we'll go over.
For me first?
Yes, please.
Well, it sounds to me like it's a done deal, I, um, right? And, and we've paid it, we've started it, what are we talking about it for? Let's make it work.
These are, these are two different programs. The NeoGov is, is paid for, the, the recruiting form, that, that's totally separate.
Okay.
That's paid its annual fee. The OpenGov is the accounting software for the entire county, and this is the, the hundred and thirty-some thousand is the initial fee for setting up, and so going forward, it will be forty-six thousand plus four percent each year.
It's an annual subscription.
Each year.
Were we paying an, an, um, an annual prescription for the prior?
Yes, for the prior, it was considerably less, it was about twelve hundred a month.
Fifteen thousand.
But that's, that's what we got.
We, we hadn't updated to the cloud, they have a cloud version also, but, um...
Eighteen hundred a month.
But if we decided to get out, we could get out, uh, with thirty days' notice.
But we need, we, we've, we've gotta keep Director of Operations here. He's the go-between, he, we've gotta have him in his finance chair, and he's the go-between, because commissioners come and go, um, the government operations continue. And the day-to-day operations have to go on, it doesn't matter who's sitting in the chairs.
Yep.
We still have to have things done, um...
But did I just hear you say you would really prefer to have him in the finance chair? Can I interpret that as full-time, you need him every-
Need him full-time, Director of Operations. I mean, not full-time, but we need him as a Director of Operations. He can do, we need him in the finance office, and he's, he's-
But I'm not following you.
Well-suited with the operations, he's got a lot more insight to this new program. He's worked with this type more than we have, and he can work with getting all the other departments set up, um, the great liaison between all the departments and finance, and...
Would you want him in the finance section of the Curry County Annex Office, full-time indefinitely?
No, he said-
I'm trying to understand.
Director of Operations, he can do the, the whole ball of wax. And so I've been promoted to Assistant Finance Director, but I do need a leader.
Who's next?
Uh, to your point, yes.
Assessor, oh, you are next, then Assessor Cullen?
To your point, yes, it has been paid for, we, we have paid for it, and, yeah, it would, it would seem ridiculous to terminate it at this point after all, excuse me, after all the work that has been put into it, um, and what has been paid, what we know about it, what it's going to, what we know it's going to help us with, again, pay, I mean, it, payroll, I... If, if you reinstate, if, if you cancel OpenGov and say, "Let's go with Casell", you still have to buy another program to, to run payroll, Casell doesn't cut it. Um, and I forgot the other thing.
You'll, we'll come back to you, that's fine. Assessor Cullen?
I'll try not to take as long as I normally do, but jeez, Chris, you might have been supr, or excuse me, Commissioner Pash, you might have been surprised that I, that I was gonna come up and agree with you on, on this one.
Really? It's a good start for, it's been a while.
Did you write it down?
Date and time, please, uh, JJ.
And, and, you know, I, I would say that's because, uh, we're into it, apparently it's already paid for. Um, you know, I, I, I know when this first came up, I, I wondered about it, but, you know, and I had to think to myself, you know, people, people don't like change. And my concern about this, the OpenGov, uh, is that we're, no, there aren't any other counties in Oregon that I, that I can call and ask, you know, how it's working for them, or, or how they do something on it. Um, but it's, it's not really gonna be my responsibility to deal with that so much as, if I have a problem with it, I'm gonna come and say, "Mr. Rickard".
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, I, I, I hope it works out as, as, as neat as it, you know, did in the demonstration when they came and gave you the demonstration on it. You know, my experience with demonstrations are, it always works great in the demonstration. Uh, and, but, yeah, uh, what I would say is, you know, the assessor's office is beginning, uh, a conversion to a new system. We had to, uh, our IT director told us he couldn't support the old system anymore, and, and really, it's going our way around the state of the, the, the state of Oregon. We're fortunate in Curry County in that we had two or three different, uh, software packages that we could choose from, that are in use in the state of Oregon and in use successfully, and we picked out the, the best one for us, and, and it's been used successfully in other counties. So, we, we know it's gonna work, and, and I can, you know, I can tell you with all confidence, I've got the staff that will make it work, uh, but, you know, new software packages cost some money, and, and old software packages cost some money. I mean, I'm, I'm, we were paying significant money per year in maintenance on the old software package. You know, there are certain packages that you need to have, I, and so with, uh... whichever gov that one was, NeoGov, I, you know, I'd, I'd have to agree with the other side, Commissioner Pash, because, uh, what we found here, uh, in, in a long time working in Curry County is that it can be difficult to attract really qualified people to come and, and work in some of the positions, and, and, and when you keep, when you keep, I, I think we've seen in a lot of departments over the years that we hire somebody, maybe from another area, and they come here and they just didn't know what it was gonna be like in Curry County. Uh, now, you know, all of us sitting in this room today, uh, Curry County works for us, but it's a culture shock for other people. Um, and, and so we've not been successful, and I don't think NeoGov is gonna really help us with that, that culture shock. Um, I, I, I feel like it's a wasted expenditure. I mean, if we have a high-level position that we really need to, to go outside to try and hire for, there, there are headhunters that will do that on a case-by-case basis. Um, but, I mean, hopefully, you know, it's already paid for this year, I, I don't think that was free money that paid for it. Uh, but, yeah, I mean, hopefully it'll prove me wrong.
So-
Jim, how long ago did we purchase your software program?
We just signed a contract in November.
Okay, thanks, I was just, I, I thought we'd, I know we had worked on it for a long time.
We've been talking about it for a long time, and, and we had to work in the schedule for the software provider.
Wh, when are they gonna implement it then?
Uh, we're starting now.
Okay.
But, that's a, that's a long process, like Mr. Rickard said, for the, the financial software, so...
I feel your pain, Jim.
Pardon?
I feel your pain.
Yeah.
Director Rickard, did you have something else?
I did.
No, I don't.
You're okay. Mr. Pash?
I just had a couple of quick comments, um, you know, with, with it being paid for, I, I'm of the same mind. If we don't use it, or it's not what we thought NeoGov was, I, I say we don't renew the subscription on it. I mean, I, I think the money's already spent, and at first I didn't agree with it, but when we had a meeting with OpenGov and we found out that OpenGov was going to acquire NeoGov, uh, then, then all of a sudden it seemed like, and they were going to integrate some of their services, that kinda sold me on it. Uh, again, if we don't use it, then, then, uh, then we don't renew the subscription on it.
Address it next time.
And the other, uh, the other point I had was a senior moment here.
We got four minutes, everyone, we'll get everybody out of here.
I can't remember what my other, my other thought was, but, uh, yeah.
Meanwhile, we will see, let's see, we're shooting for Wednesday, uh, January thirteenth, correct? We don't have a workshop though, as far as I know, we're just gonna have a nine AM meeting, thank you.
Can we continue tonight, or till then, or?
So, whatever you say.
Well, and what about department heads, or what's the liaison?
Liaison roles, I, I think we should move that.
So may we better call a workshop on Wednesday, on the thirteenth?
No!
Well, just put it in the business meeting again, I, I thought we-
We could, absolutely, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we don't need a workshop, in, in my view.
We need to go in the business meeting on the thirteenth, on the, and the discussion, correct, Chair?
I think so, I, I agree with that.
All right.
Anything else, Council Huddle?
Just hope you guys work on those liaison assignments between now and then.
You? Director Rickard?
I'm, I'm good.
Commissioner Pash? We're gonna adjourn, thank you all.